Good afternoon, everyone. Friend, if you'll come to order. It's September 18th, 1:00 PM. I'd like to officially call this work session of the Durham City Council to order for purposes of faithfully discharging the business of the people of Durham. I want to greet our executive staff today. His honor, the mayor is en route. He'll be back here with us shortly. To all of you in chamber with us today and to all of our residents and neighbors on whatever platform you may be viewing, thank you for being with us this afternoon. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Mayor Williams is en route. Mayor Protam Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. In chair's opinion, we have established quorum, and we will go about the business of the city. At this time, I'm going to yield to my honorable colleagues for any announcements they may have. Councilmember Cook, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just want to welcome everyone. I don't have any announcements. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker, good afternoon. Councilmember Caballero, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to say thank you for everyone who helped put on the strategic plan refresh this morning, including the consultant, and to all my colleagues for the really lively and good discussion.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Rist, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good afternoon, colleagues. Good afternoon, residents and staff here. Thank you for being here. I just have two things. I will ask to add an item under other matters, and that's to add a resolution on biophilic cities. I'd like to add to the other matters with the intention of bringing that to our work session, our first work session in October. Okay. The other thing is, I do want to, just want to make sure, I've been getting a lot, we all have been getting a lot of emails, a lot of emails from folks in the Watts Hillendale, Watts Hospital, Hillendale area about a lot of the, I think, water and sewer rehab, as well as Google Fiber going on there. So I just want to make sure the manager and staff are aware that in communicating with residents, there's been a lot of concerns about, about traffic disruption, about potentially, you know, losing their internet, you know, gas lines being cut. So I don't know all the details, but wanted to make sure you're aware of that and staff and communicating with the residents about that challenge. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilmember. You did ask for something to be placed, this biophilic resolution to be placed on the next agenda?
Or like on other matters to discuss putting it on the...
Today, other matters.
Today, other matters. That's right. For the purpose of like putting the resolution on the work session.
Unless you had some, you wanted to engage in conversation about it, I think we can just get a thumbs up now that we'll put it on.
Yeah.
Without objection.
For the next work session?
Yeah.
Okay, great. That's good. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. We'll go ahead and move to priority items by our executive leadership team. At this time, I'm going to yield to the city manager. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, members of council. The city manager's office has several priority items this afternoon. Agenda item number six, this is amendment number four to the South Ellerby Wetland and Stream Restoration Design Services Contract, CT-14277. This item does have a presentation that will be offered during the work session today. Agenda item number 13, this is service contract with Box.com for digital plans, submittal and review. Due to some time-sensitive issues, we are asking for council to suspend the rules and vote during this September 18th work session so that we may execute the contract in time for uninterrupted service. For agenda item number 19, report on wildlife feeding. This is a supplemental item that has been added to the agenda. And for agenda item number 21, interlocal agreement with Durham Housing, with Durham County for the provision of housing assistance and related supportive services, FY 2526, a supplemental item was added. Thank you. Those are my...
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll go ahead and take action on your request to suspend and vote on item number, I believe that was 13.
13.
Right. Service contract with Box.com for digital plans, submittal and review. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
You have a question?
A second, but I would just...
Sure. I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Let me go to suspend the rules, and then you want to speak directly to the item, right?
Yes.
All right. Let's go ahead. I'll entertain, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Whoa.
Aye. Those opposed? We're still going to entertain. I just wanted to go ahead and suspend the rules, and then we'll, we'll take, because your comments are germane to the actual item, then we'll take up the, go ahead. What was your question?
I just want to know about the need for the rule suspension on this item.
Do you have a resource person?
Bo DeBrensky, planning and development department. We had ongoing negotiations with the Box.com folks. This is a software used to transfer large documents to the city for development review purposes. It's important and much needed for, for our ongoing services. And so we, given the delays that we had with our negotiations with them, we can't afford a delay, you know, waiting for the approval of the contract. So it would hinder our ability to provide that service.
Mr. DeBrensky, am I correct that there were negotiations for renewing this contract started in a normal, timely manner that our attorney's office, I don't want to speak for our attorney's office, our attorney's office requested some changes to the vendor's contract language. The vendor was unresponsive. We tried in good faith to get those resolved and finally reached resolution, but in so doing, used up the rest of the existing contract time. And so that's what created the time-sensitive request for renewal. We didn't have approved language until just before this work session, and the contract expires in September. Am I getting those facts straight? And Madam Attorney, is there anything you want to add to that?
You got that exactly right, Mr. Manager. I will add, I believe this contract previously had fallen within the manager's contracting authority, and the vendor has raised their prices and put it into the purview of the council as well. So that was another factor that caused it to even be on your agenda.
That's correct.
So I'm familiar with Box and move large files often. There are other companies that do this. Do we have concerns about this vendor giving, given the lack of responsiveness?
So we've been using Box for five years, ever since we converted to digital review as a part of COVID response. We have no concerns in terms of the service they've been providing. The slight increase has been somewhat expected. It was just right at that cusp in terms of the permissions. When we moved to our next-gen development review software, we may no longer need it. So this is potentially, or most likely, a very temporary solution.
So you think that it might not be renewed after the one year is over? Well, we don't know, but...
Yeah. I don't know. But yeah, certainly not long-term.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a service contract with Box Inc. for a period of one year in an amount not to exceed $52,212.50.
So moved.
Are your motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Item 13 is disposed of. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll yield now to our attorney for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, counselor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam. I don't have any priority items for the council's consideration, but with your indulgence, I would like to make a brief introduction.
Of course.
I'd like to invite Tony Baker up to the lectern to introduce himself. I sent an email around earlier, but just got to it today. Tony is joining us in the city attorney's office, and he is taking on the tremendous task of being the chief legal advisor for the Durham Police Department, which is the largest administrative unit in the city and a heavy lift for one person, but I just wanted him to be able to say hi.
Thank you for the introduction and very pleased and excited.
Hit your microphone, bud, please, sir. Right there on the right.
All right, Tony.
Thank you. I got it. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. Very excited and pleased to join Kim's team and join the city of Durham. I can tell you, as I was looking and speaking with other attorneys, municipal attorneys, but even folks that represent cities, they all uniformly spoke very highly of your city attorney's office and of Kim, and very much encouraged me, if I could get an offer, which I was very thankful to receive, to take it immediately, which I did. So very happy to be here, and thank you for the introduction and for the welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. All right. At this time, I'll yield to our city clerk for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. On the city clerk's office does have one supplemental item. It's item number 20, to add a new subcategory, section F in the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 6, Section 10-241, violation penalty fees as proposed.
All right. I, yeah, we'll take that up under, on the matters. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you to our executive staff. At this time, I will read our administrative consent items that we will be dealing with today. Of course, any of these items can be pulled by a member of the council or a member of the public. And I'll begin reading from the city clerk's office. Item number one, approval of city council minutes. Departmental items, audit services department, item number two, 2025 fiscal year in inventory performance audit, August 2025. Budget and management services department, item number three, request to carryover funding from fiscal year 2024 to 25 to fiscal year 2025 to 26 to amend the fiscal year 2025-26 budget, capital improvement plan, CIP, and internal service fund spending plans.
Pull that.
Item number three is pulled. Under our engagement, from our engagement department, item number four, grant project ordinance accepting through Central Pines Regional Council and North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Digital Champions Grant for Technology Acquisition for Digital Literacy Training. Under Environmental and Street Services Department, item number five, contract amendment number four for SD 2021-06, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Water System, MS4 inspections. Item number six, amendment number four to South Ellerby Wetland and Stream Restoration Design Services Contract, CT-14277. This is a presentation slated to go 10 minutes. From our finance department, item number seven, resolution to authorize the execution of opioid settlements with secondary opioid manufacturers, Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family, and approving the third supplemental agreement for additional funds from opioid litigation, SAF-3. Item number eight, resolution authorizing the virtual city auction. Item number nine, rewrite of resolution designating city manager contract approval thresholds, formerly number 9673.
I'll pull that one.
Item number nine is pulled. The general services department, item 10, Second Amendment to the City of Durham and the Carolina Theater of Durham Inc. Building and Services Agreement. Our planning and development department, item 11, resolution to recognize Merrick Moore as a Durham heritage community. Item 12, revisions to Historic Preservation Commission's Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Item 13, service contract with Box.com for digital plans, let me read and say, for service contract with Box.com for digital plans, submittal and review. That item's already been taken action on per the manager's request. From our Technology Solutions Department, item 14, contract for information technology research and advisory services. Item number 15, contract with Open Sesame Inc. to enhance the city's learning content. Our Transportation Department, item 16, letter of request for North Carolina Department of Transportation to conduct a feasibility study for a passenger rail station in Research Triangle Park.
Don't pull that. But just to say, thanks to the manager and staff for putting this on the agenda.
That's great. Duly noted. And for public hearings, from our planning and development department to be heard at our Monday council meeting, item number 17, local historic landmark designation, the Chicken Hut. Item number 18, consolidated annexation, Heartland Park subdivision. And I believe a member of our community has pulled that item to speak on that today. And then citizens' matters to be heard at 1:00 PM. Virtually, I have DeWarren Langley, and that's citizens' matter. Item number 18 is Sarah Thielen. And then in-house with us today, I have Jack Holtzman, Milo Graber, Ezra Gustaf Norberg, Anne Rebeck, Nick McLeod, Doris Batista, or Donna Batista, Italyo Medellius, and that's all the cards I have.
Those were for speaking on item 20.
Oh, these are all one, okay. They're not, okay. I thought they were citizens' matters. Reading's fundamental. All right. For, we'll move now to our citizens' matters to be heard at 1:00. Madam Clerk, would you please make DeWarren Langley a hearable?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Langley, good afternoon, sir. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Hey, Mr. DeLangley, if you would suspend for a second. Let me continue the reading with supplemental items. On the Housing and Neighborhood Services Department, item number 19, report on wildlife feeding. Item 21, interlocal agreement with Durham County for the provision of housing assistance and related supportive services. From the city council, city council approval of ordinance revision to Chapter 10, Article 6, Housing Code, Section 10-241. And that is the ending of the reading of the published agenda. All right. We'll go now to Mr. Langley. Mr. Langley, if you can hear me, you have three minutes, sir. Thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the city council. I am DeWarren Langley. I serve as the executive director of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation. It is an impact-driven nonprofit committed to advancing equity and opportunities for boys and young men of color through competency-based learning, strategy-centered mentorship, and career-focused skill development. Our mission is to dismantle systemic barriers and expand pathways to academic achievement, careers, economic mobility, and leadership. In Durham, we often talk about shared prosperity, but for too many boys and young men of color, that prosperity feels disdain. At the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, we make it real. We do not just tell boys and young men about opportunities. We walk with them step by step until those opportunities become careers, stability, and mobility. Let me share the story of one of our young men who pursued a trade in a high-demand career pathway. He graduated from Southern School of Engineering, Energy and Sustainability. He worked as a chef at Frankie's, but like so many of our young men, he experienced trauma, the loss of a close friend to gun violence. He wanted more than just a job. He wanted a career. We met, and he learned about the Electrical Line Technician Program at Durham Technical Community College. I invited him to join me for an information session, and to our disappointment, the program was full, and he was placed on a waiting list. Then COVID-19 hit. He lost his job. But instead of letting frustration or despair take over, we encouraged him to stay focused on his career goals. When the program reopened, he enrolled for 350 hours. He trained to climb poles, maintain power lines, and build the state's energy infrastructure. He stuck with it, and on December 18th, 2020, he earned his certificate of completion. We helped revise his resume, prepare for interviews. Shortly after, he secured a full-time employment as an electrical line technician with a utility company, earning over $60,000 a year. Now, five years into his career, he is engaged to be married and welcomed his first son. He was even able to purchase a truck for his grandfather who raised him. When I text him with my pride, he replied with gratitude, not just for the training, but for the support, encouragement, and strategy our career pathway program provided. His story is just one example, but it shows what's possible. It shows that when boys and young men of color are given consistent guidance, access to opportunities, and the right support, they not only avoid cycles of violence and poverty, they step into high demand, high-paying careers. They strengthen Durham's workforce. They expand our tax base. They create safer and more prosperous communities for all of us. That is what we mean by shared economic prosperity. But here's the truth. We cannot achieve this alone. For Durham to truly fulfill its promise for equity and inclusion, boys and young men of color must be at the center of our shared prosperity.
Mr. Langley, thank you so much. That's your time. Mr. Langley, thank you. Mr. Langley, thank you so much. That's your time. We always appreciate you being with us. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, if you would make Sarah Thielen hearable.
She's her number 18. Do you want to do that one?
Yeah. Isn't a, you have her listed as a citizens' matter, right? Or you...
She's not a citizens' matter. She's number 18.
Okay. All right.
Madam Clerk, they won't be here in the public hearing, so if she's going to speak, she should speak during citizens' matters.
Okay. You want her to speak?
Sarah Thielen, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can barely hear you. If you can maybe adjust your microphone volume?
Okay. I don't know if you can see this better?
That's much better. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So I'm Sarah Thielen at 1105 Doc Nichols Road in Durham. I'm representing myself. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak today in favor of higher-density housing, specifically in southeast Durham, to increase affordability across, across the city. The facts on affordable housing, which I'm sure you guys are well-versed in, teachers start at around $41,000 annually for salaries. Police and firefighters, around $50,000. Registered nurses are around 74. And Durham's median home price is over $400,000. Household needs around $120,000 annual income to afford a home, nearly triple what many of these essential workers earn. So what I'm attempting to do today is to put a kind of human faith on, on some of these affordability challenges that we have. I don't need to tell you all, but this affordability crisis has immediate consequences for service delivery. Durham police operates with a 28% vacancy rate. Fire has vacancy rates as well. Durham Public Schools has staffing shortages. So people are going where they can afford and forcing out current residents, often in places like Bradtown, Hayti, and the 98 Corridor. Research that I have found demonstrates that building new affordable housing prevents displacement more effectively than converting existing units. Research out of UC Berkeley saw that in San Francisco, rents fell close to new developments, with displacement risk increasing by nearly 17% for nearby residents. Now, there is development happening in Durham, obviously, quite a bit on Little Bitty Doc Nichols Road. When we moved there, it was pretty close to a dirt road, a quiet little place to raise our family. Now, it is much, much busier. We got lots of new neighbors. We have smooth blacktop and sidewalks in some places. It's very exciting, places for our kids to go trick-or-treating. And yet, the affordability crisis is, is still very prevalent. You know, we see the apartments going up in downtown, renting for well above what, what our essential workers can afford. And they have a 10.1% vacancy rate, indicating an oversupply in that luxury segment, while affordable housing remains, remains quite scarce. The city's mixed-income development model aligns with research best practices and what I'm asking for today, and that is action on that model. Build hired, build higher-density, actually affordable housing, where development is already happening in southeast Durham. Larger question for the council is, what does Durham want to be? Is it a place where only, you know, the wealthy can live? There are some higher-density projects that have been waiting for approval for two and a half, three years. Heartland Park subdivision is one of them, and it's still not approved. There are people still waiting for housing, still getting priced out of their own neighborhoods with nowhere affordable to go.
Ms. Thielen, thank you. Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. That's your time. I appreciate you being with us. Madam Clerk, please note that the arrival of the mayor, good afternoon, sir. Good to have you with us. I'm going to move to the pulled items, item number three, and that was pulled by Councilmember Rist. Start with you.
Mayor Protam, may I quickly, since we had the issue with the citizens' matters, could you just tell us which items are pulled from the actual agenda?
I'm sorry?
With the citizens' matters?
Oh, I have item number three and nine pulled.
And, and I think that you have a lot of speakers on 20. And then if it hasn't been pulled, I'd like to pull number 19 as well.
Okay. We'll pull number nine. Yeah, 20 also approves, appears under city council. I was going under supplemental items, so I was just going to do that when we got to supplemental items.
We're going to treat it as being pulled.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's actually printed, so we'll treat it under supplemental items since it's appearing on the agenda. But you did say you also wanted to pull?
Number 19 as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Item number three, Councilmember Rist.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. So I just have a question. I know we do these carryovers a couple of times a year, right?
We do the, excuse me, Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services Director. We do amendments a few times a year. The carryover process only happens once a year.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. And I just want to confirm. So these are, these carryovers are, these are not multi-year projects, right? These are projects that were in last year's budget that were not completed for some reason or other, right?
Yes. Carryovers are things that departments, for the most part, would have tried to get done in the last year and maybe for some reason didn't get them. If they're encumbered, they roll into the new budget as a carryforward. Carryovers are things that they could not get done. And so we have asked departments to let us know if there's something that they need to get done in this year's budget that would impact their services.
And we're talking about the carryovers today, right?
Yes, the carries.
So I just noticed there are a lot of, a lot of parks and sidewalks projects in there. And so I guess I want to know, you know, is there, are there any patterns there why these projects were not completed in the last year that we should be aware of?
I'm going to have our Parks Department is here today to talk to you a little bit about. I know there's some half-penny stuff that is in the carryover, so they're prepared to talk to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. Denise Chaplik, DPR, Assistant Director of Park Planning and Development. Question about what is being carried over and what will be using those funding for this, this year.
Well, it's been a larger question. It's more, you know, so the carryovers, are there any, like, I know we do this every, every year, but I'm just wondering if there are any patterns. These are projects that weren't completed last year. Anything we should know about why these are being carried over?
I guess I would say capacity of what our current staff is able to do. That would be a pattern. For instance, our DPR staff, we have one project, construction project manager, and her bandwidth to be able to complete projects. For instance, she did the Sherwood Playground redevelopment replacement. That project in itself takes an entire year.
I guess my follow-up question would be then, are we, are we, is this a, is this a chronic problem that we have? Is this going to happen again for this year's budget then, if we don't have the right staff? So it sounds like...
If schedules slip, yes. And there are many factors that influence schedules, whether it's weather, contractors, permitting. So if, if schedules do slip, because this is an annual cycle, and if we don't encumber it within that cycle, you'll see things roll over.
Yeah, I guess for the manager, I just want to make sure we watch this. Obviously, if this is a chronic stabbing issue that we're going to see all the time, I think we need to, we need to address that head-on. So I just want to flag that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. I would like to add additional funds. I know that this is an item I brought up at, at budget adoption, which was increased funding for Justice Matters. At the time, that was not included, and I specifically said that I would be bringing it forward. So it's not a surprise. So I would like to have an additional $200,000 added to the contract of, of Justice Matters. I know we have to vote on that item, so not today, obviously, but I just wanted to share that with staff. And I know that other council members have to weigh in on that.
No, thank you, Councilmember. And you indeed did telegraph that you would, you would be mentioning that. I think I also telegraphed that the Museum of Durham History is requesting just under $50,000 as well, and the county will add in as well for some work on their future plans as well. But it is noted that Councilmember Caballero is, will be making an ask. Anyone else on item number three? All right. I have item number nine pulled.
Quick question. With, with the additional funds, Mr. Manager, do we, how does that work? Do we pull from somewhere else? Is it, is it, how does a balancing of it works?
So carryover funds are, happen through our fund balance, so, because they're one-time in nature. And so this request would, as part of this process, would have to be a one-time. So I think staff would just like, you know, direction from council, if that's your pleasure to kind of do that as well, too.
Yeah, and I, and I support it. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to operationalize it. These are, if I remember correctly, these are carryover funds that are allocated based on...
Yeah, so they carry over from one year to the other. They're usually projects that, as Councilmember Rist had spoken about before, projects that departments may not have gotten done.
Could be a myriad of reasons.
Could be a myriad of things going on, or something that came up after we had done the budget process. But they're intended to be one-time because we are using fund balance as the revenue source. And so we don't do that for reoccurring items. And so that's, that's kind of the nature of how this is funded.
And just to kind of circle the loop on that, essentially, this money of spent now will be, when we get to the end of the year and calculate the fund balance, this will be $200,000 that doesn't have fund balance. We have, when we go into the budget development process, as you know, frequently we'll allocate fund balance for one-time expenditures for the next year. This will be $200,000 that would not be available for those. So it's your, your forward, forward allocating $200,000 of fund balance that otherwise might go to other purposes. And as long as the council's aware and understands that trade-off, then that is something that is at the council's discretion. Thank you.
Were you done with that, Mayor?
Yeah, I was, I was literally asking out of curiosity. Yeah, I was literally asking out of curiosity.
Item number nine, Councilmember Cook. I think you pulled that. I'll yield to you.
I did, thank you. I'm wondering, hi. Good to see you. I am wondering, this item is an interesting one, and the manager and I have had a conversation about it already. In suggesting these increases, what went into, I know obviously we did some comparable studies for other cities, our neighbors, but what else went into the actual evaluations? And I'm particularly interested in the service contracts one, because that one is increasing quite a bit.
Yes, Tim Flora, Finance Director, thank you for that question. Good seeing you all today. Yeah, so this has been a sort of couple of years-long process where we really did evaluate not only our current thresholds, but we also evaluated our internal controls, we evaluated what our peers have done. And really, the conclusion was, we also evaluated the length of time it takes in order for us to go from conceptual idea to contract execution. And so we were looking at sort of the bottlenecks as well, and not to say that this is a bottleneck, but this is one of, a number of bottlenecks where the processes getting to the executed contract would get delayed. And so all of those factors took into account and looking at that, and really, when we started looking at our peers and the fact that it had been since, I think, 2009, since the last time we had raised those thresholds, that it looked like it was time to do a refresh.
I'm just going to speak to this item for a minute. I went back through for the entire year and polled all of the items that were expenditures that fit into all of these categories. So I just want to talk about what essentially we will be doing if we change these thresholds. So the reason I was asking specifically about services is because that one was the one that I found to be the most problematic. We pulled, I mean, we pulled lots of items that didn't fall under these categories, too, so I don't want y'all to think that this is like the context of everything we pulled. But we, or citizens, we as council or citizens, pulled three items that were good, all of goods, all of those were above the $500,000 threshold, so I feel fine about those. We are pulled, we also pulled five items that would fall under the repairs category. Again, actually, all of those were above the threshold, so that one feels fine to me as well. But of the items that were pulled that were service-related, which was 29 items this year, most, the vast majority of them, were under the threshold, so they were in between where we are now and, yes, where we are now and where we are proposing to go. So 65% of the polled items, mostly from council, but some from residents, and these would then not be public. So I hear the conversation about a bottleneck, and I understand the need for efficiency, but part of this is also ensuring that council has the opportunity to look closely at this and also making sure that the public has the opportunity to look closely at these contracts. And so for me, when I'm looking at this and understanding that we have that, most of those items that we're pulling are now going to be off the agenda, that doesn't feel good to me. It doesn't feel like it reflects our values of transparency, it does not come up for debate and conversation. I also, as an aside, I've already told the manager this, but I had asked him to not put this on quite yet. He hasn't been manager for an entire year yet, and he's also been filling quite a few departmental leadership positions, and those folks are very new. We have a new deputy city manager, we have new departments reporting to our deputy city managers, and we have new heads of several departments. For me, I would love to have waited on this just a few months to sort of get our restructure sort of in the flow. I mean, I don't even, I feel like I can't even talk about the departments because I don't know what everything's called yet. But all of these items, because I saw the patterns and don't feel concerned, I'm totally fine with the increase on the goods, I'm totally fine with the increase on the repairs. If we do feel like we need to increase the services, I would propose that we only do it to 100,000. That would link with, that would track the county's threshold, and they redid their threshold this year, so that is our most recent comparable one. So that is going to be my request of you colleagues today, is that we, I'm fine with everything else except for the service-related threshold and that we bring it back down to 100,000, so still seeing some increase, hopefully some more efficiency. And I think that that would take into account, obviously, that it's been a really long time since we've revisited this, and so we've got inflation and other things to think about. I think it would take out sort of our less maybe pressing items, but it would still leave most of the ones that we polled and wanted to publicly discuss.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rist?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, so thank you for bringing this forward. I support this resolution. I think this is an important way that we can speed up, I talked to Mr. Egan about this at the break, speed up our work as a public body, making things move faster, right? And this is back to like parks and roads and sidewalks and stuff. I also like the fact that it's going to create more space in our meetings to do other things than just approve contracts that are smaller contracts. I understand the concern that Councilmember Cook has about potential trade-offs, but I would like either Mr. Flora, the manager, speak to what this would look like. This is not that we have no visibility in these contracts, is that correct? I'd love to hear about that. The second thing I also wanted, well, yeah, answer that now, a follow-up question after that.
Okay, yeah, so we were, we fully expected to maintain, or we fully expect to maintain our transparency through this process. And so one of the things that we do in our quarterly reports is we report currently now on the number of contracts that we have issued. But what we would do is, in lieu now of these contracts coming to council, on a quarterly basis, we have a report that lists every one of our contracts. And so we fully intend to change our quarterly reporting to show to council and to our residents every contract that gets approved. So it'll be by type, by vendor, by department, by amount, and by the amount of the award. And so I feel like that we get to maintain our transparency through this revised way we are going to report on, in our quarterly reporting.
Thank you for that. And then my follow-up question is, you know, as Councilmember Cook identified, we pulled a number of these contracts, and I've pulled many of them and had concerns about contracts I felt like didn't have enough detail in terms of metrics and milestones and so forth. So I guess my question would be, are we also, are there some minimum standards of what all contracts will contain, so we know that the ones that we're not seeing anymore, that there's going to be a minimum threshold that they all will contain certain things, which for me would include things like clear benchmarks and milestones, for example? Because I've seen, in the ones we've pulled and then looked at, I've seen sort of different sort of levels of that. So can we, is there going to be some commitment to like some minimum standards on a range of things we can chat about?
I think we certainly can, you know, evaluate that. That was something I hadn't really been aware of going through the process, but I think absolutely, I think we can have that discussion with departments as to what that would actually look like. I mean, I think depending upon the contract, I mean, I can see in some contracts that that would be necessary. Others are just, you know, cut and dry contracts, carpet cleaning, paper good products, those types of things. But I think we can dive into that issue a little bit more. I mean, that's not been necessarily an initiative that we were looking at, but I don't know why we couldn't include that as part of our efforts, working through the contracting process.
Great, thank you.
And I will say, one of the things I'm not sure that council's aware, we go through two on-base processes, right? So there is a process that we bring these contracts to council to review and provide authorization for the city manager to approve. And so that is one process where we go through multiple steps, working with our departments, working with the city attorney's office. And then, once it comes through here, it actually goes through a whole other process before it actually gets to execution of contract, which is, there are seven sign-offs. Once we get past these council meetings and it is approved on a Monday night, there are seven additional sign-offs, a whole other process that gets, that we go through before the city manager actually gets it to execute. So it could possibly be that through that process, we work up something with performance measures.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Caballero, and then Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. I appreciate this item. I just want to say I am supportive of it. I think this is something that I know I've been pushing for, is efficiency, efficiency, and more efficiency. And we already get an agenda item that tells us what the manager's, what those, what has been approved. I think it's quarterly, right? We get a quarterly on our, like, these are the contracts that were already executed that were below his threshold, or, sorry, yeah, that he could do on his own without us. So I would imagine that it would just be a longer piece of that, or piece, right? And then I think to Councilmember Rist's point, I don't know if it's the contractor or if it's the memos associated. Like, I know that, I'm just mentioning this, when we get things around our affordable housing, like, I've often asked, I want to see the stack of like, where's that, where's the money coming from, right? And so I think you often pull things around OEWD. So I think that it may not be in the contract itself, but when that thing comes back to us, I want folks to understand, and I'm going to use the affordable housing example, we'll say, oh, there's this much subsidy, but that's just a big number. I want folks to really understand, what does it take to put a deal like that together? And where's the subsidy coming? Because it is complicated, and I think that sometimes people just think, oh, it just happens, and it doesn't. So to Councilmember Cook's point around transparency, I think you can do both, right? We can be more efficient and then add that layer within our own memos. And so as y'all are reviewing that process, that's the thing that I know I need to see. And for me, it is specifically around our affordable housing projects, not just, so the financing is one. And then I know that this has come up with some of our RFPs on the delivery of housing, that they were supposed to be tied to special populations. And so it's that, again, not really having clarity on who are those units going to and are we meeting the goals of that RFP? And that is something that has come up before as well. So I think that whether it's, it's not really the dollar amount, it's how much, what's in that memo and how clear is that information? And if you need to add some nuance, then add it. And whether that's a $50,000 contract or a $300,000 contract, but information needs to be there, it doesn't really matter what the amount is. Thank you.
Great feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with this. I think it makes a lot of sense. I was along the lines of Councilmember Cook. I was going to suggest a lower change in threshold for goods purchase, but I'm impressed that Councilmember Cook, I did her research and looked at what items have been pulled previously, so I'm now comfortable with 500. I do think that for services, I would not prefer such a high jump to 500,000. Councilmember Cook suggested 100,000, which would be doubling, which is equal to what the county is. I would be comfortable with going up to 200,000. So I'd propose that to my council colleagues, that we change goods purchase all the way up to 500,000, construction repair all the way up to 500,000, electric utility all the way up to 500,000. And then for services, I would propose going up to 200,000, which would be quadruple what it is today and double what it is for Durham County. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, colleagues, I support the proposal as is. You know, it's interesting, we give great deference to our peer cities for a lot of things. When we wanted to raise salaries, we, you know, we treated our peer city numbers as gospel, and we trusted the due diligence they did, we trusted their read of the market. And I think these numbers are instructive. For me, the number of, and I've been in a lot of these conversations, the number of items that were pulled is not so much impressive to me as is the nature of the conversation. I mean, we can pull an item for any reason, and I can't recall a conversation where when an item was pulled, there was anything substantive in that conversation that gave me pause, that made me think there was, here goes the trilogy, fraud, waste, and abuse were occurring, or that anything were untoward. If that were the case, then there is no number between 50 and 500,000 that I would be comfortable with. If I were uncomfortable with something, I'm not going to tweak it up at all. But I, you know, the substance of the conversations, to me, they were great questions, I thought important clarifying conversations, but nothing that gave me pause. I think this is a good use of peer data from sister cities. I totally support the thresholds that the managers and the staff is asking. And of course, we can always go back, we still have access to the memos, we can do our due diligence as much as we want and ask any other questions we want. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was just listening to the conversation here. So one, as I'm listening to the conversation, I think about what is or could be translated to the public domain. And I did hear some language, unintentionally, I believe, or not in ill will, but insinuating that something may be private. Nothing we do is private. Everything is always public. And to Councilmember Cook's point, she's, you know, stated she's gone through all of these items that were pulled. I have not gone through all of the items that were pulled specifically for this reason, but I would be interested in knowing how many items were pulled and then we reversed it, or we did not approve it. The other thing is, you know, we are a growing city and we are, Durham has grown a lot, and to whatever person's interpretation of growth and development, it's going to continue to grow. And growth and development is something quite mechanical. It really doesn't matter who's sitting up here, it's going to grow whether by write or by approvals. That being said, we are a real city, and we are experiencing more issues that are going to come before us. We have real, I mean, I sit on the Board of Trustees at Go Triangle, I see what's coming throughout the region when it comes to transportation, and there are some things that we need to, like, I don't know if we really have realized that we don't talk a lot about our regional responsibilities in-house as much as we should. I don't come back and talk in detail of what's going on at Go Triangle as much as we should. I don't have the space to. You all, I have some of you all on MPO, TPO. I don't have the space for you all to talk about that as much here, you know? And then bringing it home to Joint City-County Planning Commission, and we do talk about those things, obviously, but it's just, we need more capacity to address things that we're really concerned about, rather than just being so processed in the agenda. But we're a real city, you know? And there is no way in the world I'm going to agree to pay someone $300,000 in salary and not have confidence in their ability. So I have confidence in your ability to lead us. If you screw up, then we fire you. It's as simple as that. And I would expect the same, the same, this is a right-to-work state, I don't like the working conditions in this state, but that is, you know, it happens, you know? You screw up, we're going to fire you. And you would do the same. But I just want to say, you know, making moves like this, it could, you know, it is drastic, going from 50,000 to 500,000, but at the same time, the drastic could be described as how outdated we are as well. And so I support it. I want us to move forward with it. I want us to open up the capacity of the agenda to be able to address more things. And I think we saw the eagerness for that during the strategic plan meeting this morning. But I say that with respect to the concern as well of my colleagues. I'm going to support what's proposed, although I personally kind of lean with Councilmember Baker on it. But at the same time, incrementalism is, I mean, we're going to either raise it or we're not. It's still the same people, same topics. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm ready, I'm ready to move forward on it. There are a few things we need to evolve in our city government, and this is one of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I just want to respond to that. Well, a couple of things I want to respond to. First of all, I'm not trying to be like contrarian, but I think that we can all sit up here and understand that a quarterly report is not the same thing as having it on a bi-weekly agenda, where people can pull it and make comment. They can pull it, they can come to a work session and talk about it, we can talk about it at a work session, or they can pull it at a meeting. There's multiple opportunities. Having it in a quarterly report, it just doesn't, it does not allow the same interaction. I mean, and like, that's it. It's this functionality, it doesn't compare. We are a local government. We are meant to be here to be responsive to people, and I hear the concerns about efficiency and about having more time set aside for other things. And I do think that an incremental increase is probably needed here, but whether we need to jump five, or 10 times, excuse me, 10 times from 50,000 to 500,000, where we don't get to interact, knowing what we know now about what we've pulled just in the last year, and I didn't go back further even past 2025, these are things that we are talking about. And it's not to say that they are approved or not approved at the end, I don't think that's important. But what is important is that there's concern enough about these issues that we wanted to pull them and talk about them publicly. As it respects to our peer cities, of course, we respect them. For pay scales, we are competitive with them. And so of course, we're going to look at those pay scales because we want to make sure that our folks are being paid competitively. We are not competitive with respect to transparency, I hope. We're not like, oh, who can be? We're not like, oh, who can be more or less transparent? We would set that value in-house. So I'm not comfortable with this multiplying times 10. I would be an open to a conversation about a lesser amount if folks want to entertain that. And if they don't, I'm going to ask that it be put on G B A.
We can certainly put it on G B A. And I, you know, I would say your, your point is well made and well taken. I, I guess for me, if the manager points at a number from a peer city and says, let's do parity with that number. And then for me to say, well, let's arbitrarily pick a number in between. For me, with nothing to point at other than my own reticence or, or discomfort, then, for me, from an intellectual honesty point of view, what, what is my basis for that number in between the 50 grand and the 500 grand? Whereas he's pointing to actual peer statistics. I don't, I don't, I guess I'd look at the pulled items. And again, the fact that they were pulled, not necessarily as evidence or a basis for an incremental jump somewhere in between 50 and 500,000. I don't think, I mean, the due diligence that you did, Councilmember Cook, we're all, we can all do that if we want. And your diligence is to be commended. I mean, at any given time as a council, we can, we don't have to wait till quarterly. We can literally, as a council member every week, ask for what's going on from staff. So, yeah, I, point is well made, but I, I still support the ask as presented.
Just real quick, and I, Councilmember Freeman was going. Can we request this at any time? I know like our 911 call data, we get it every night. On a weekly basis, if I want to know what business, you know, items have come across the manager's desk, can you provide that to us as a report? I mean, you can do a quarterly report, yes. But at any time, we should be able to request the information we want, right?
Correct. I mean, we, we respond to contract free information requests on a pretty routine basis as to contracts. And so I, I suspect the report that we run is a report that we can run whenever we need to run it for the time period we need to run it. I can look.
Okay, and to Councilmember Cook, just a quick question. Is it your concern that you want to just, you want to be able to discuss? You want to be able to discuss it in the public domain? Or is it for personal, like, like direct interest or what?
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the quarterly reports are the contracts that have come to and been signed by the manager's office and have gone through the second step that you've already talked about. And the things that are coming in front of us have not yet been signed.
That is correct.
And so this is the opportunity for us to have a conversation about the contracts before they are signed. And for the public to hear about them before they are signed.
I would just ask if there's a way for this in-between conversation, knowing that there are contracts that are coming forward before they are signed? Is there a way to report on that in a way that's similar without? Yeah. Because what I, what I do know is sometimes, you know, things come up. Like, I, I think what comes to mind specifically is, it's a, it's a development case within V O, V O something. But the way in which they operate in community, for people to be able to at least say a thing before it's signed is a little bit different than getting a report post, being ready to send a check. So, and then also, I would say that there's, there's a difference in us accessing information and the public accessing information. So I don't know if it's public facing or not. But the, the piece about transparency is making sure it's not just at council level that I'm hearing, that feels, feels a little bit like, yeah.
And I totally get that. I, I, this is where those philosophical differences may come. The community, the public elected us here to do the job. And it's up to us if we want to go out and, you know, put things on display in front of the community at large. I'm totally fine with that. I would do it, you know? I've done several town halls. But I, I, you know, we were elected, you know, and I'm not, I want to make sure I'm not, I want to make sure I'm really clear. I'm not pushing back on your perspective. This is just my perspective. We were elected to do a job. And I, I get told all the time, look, I elected you, go do the job. Please, don't spend all your time coming back to ask me, like, look, this is that, this is that. Because we do a lot of engagement. But I also hear what you're saying. And I, and that's just the nature of Durham politics and politics in general, where we go back and we, you know, display it all. And, and, you know, it's, it's just a, for me, it's a philosophical perspective of politics. You get, you know, it's 300-some thousand people. You're just never going to get everybody. That's why, you know, this representative government works the way it does. But I get what, what you're saying as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a really important discussion, how we effectively do public business in the city, right? And so I think Councilmember Freeman's point is really good. If there was some way to have visibility on these, we don't have to have them here in this room at the work session. There's some way to have visibility before they're signed. I think that's actually a really good idea. For me, there's a question, and I appreciate Councilmember Cook's comments, but I do feel like it's not about, like, we don't have like infinite amount of time here. If we had infinite time, we could do all the contracts, right? But we have limited time. And so to me, there's opportunity cost. If we spend time here in a work session on a bunch of service contracts for $200,000 versus conversations about Go Triangle or the T P O or like water in Durham, right? So those are the conversations I'd rather have with limited time here. So to me, it's not a question of like, you know, ideally, do we do it? It's more like, what's the opportunity cost? And I think there's real gains here from freeing up the agenda from a lot of contracts to have much more substantive conversations about the issues that really address, that affect our city. So, thank you.
Just can I, just one question to Councilmember. So what Councilmember Freeman stated, that's, it's like a pre-approval report. It's, it's, yeah. I am concerned about the workload, but also don't know how it would be reported. But I'm interested in that because I think that's a.
We would have to go back and evaluate processes because on a daily basis, there are multiple contracts that go in through the, to the contract workflow. And so I'm not sure that we've got technology that, that would, that would help facilitate that. It would be more a very manual process of someone trying to track all of the, the contracts that are flowing through the city attorney's office, through finance, through, and, and when I say finance, I, I've got contracts that are flowing through my underutilized business compliance division that's flowing through the, the purchasing division that's going through our risk management division as they're evaluating the insurance needs. And so, so their contracts are all in a different phases of being executed. And so.
And, and I'm thinking about the city attorney's office. There's two, like, two versions. There's the like, in addition to the city attorney, you're, you're sharing with the city council office. And then that in turn becomes something that the clerk is made aware of. Or there's this kind of a dashboard that just keeps it rolling, you know, whenever contracts come in, this is what's happening kind of thing that's just available publicly.
We would have to evaluate the.
But you hear like what I'm saying.
Absolutely. I absolutely hear what, what you're saying. And what I'll say is, is, you know, a lot of those contracts are starting as RFPs, right? And so we have a very open process of where we're posting our RFPs. But that's not all, that is not all of our, our contracts. And so I would, I would be not saying that correctly if I was saying it's, oh, it's all, it's already, already posted through the RFP process. But I know there's just many ways that we work through developing our contracts. And it's just not a centralized process other than when it makes it into the on-base portal for that process. And so I think what I would have to do is I would have to evaluate that and then come back with you and say, oh, is there a way that we can track that information once it enters that contracting portal process? And, I mean, that might be an option. I just, I, I would hate to speak for my technology folks and others.
Thank you. Appreciate all the conversation. I'm fine with going down to 250 because that's half on the services. I, I, that's fine if it means that we're going to be able to move forward on the thing. I'd rather move us forward than not do a thing. So that, that's, that's where I'm at, just as a, because what I heard is everyone's fine on the service, no, not on the service, on the repairs and the construction. It was just a services question. So 250 is a big augment. It's half, seems reasonable. And, and there was a second part. I'll think about it. But I just wanted to, oh, yeah, it's around the peer cities. I think that there is, I mean, there are metrics around efficiency and, and well-ordered government. And I will say this about North Carolina. We don't do, they can be pretty critical about us. But there's a lot of North Carolina cities that get put on well-organized municipal government. So there are structures in place, I think, to how we are by law and structures that, that are, that we all have to follow, which is why you don't often see some of the things that maybe are, we see in other cities and other communities, right? So I think that that is one of the benefits of how municipal government is structured in North Carolina. I also say that we have a third-party auditor, y'all. We get an auto-report every year. We have to. There, there's lots of checks and balances in our system. And I don't think we would have been on all of these lists over many years now about efficient government, transparent government. We do get assessed by outside parties. Bond agencies assess us. Like, there's lots of things that we are out in the, in the ethers that are assessing how we are running the city beyond whether we saw a contract at a city council meeting or not. And there's some times where things even here get missed. So just because it showed up here didn't mean that we didn't mess up. So that, that's all I want to say.
And I would be in support. What I was going to say is that I do know that it's been a long time. So I think that we have to account for inflation. And also, I do think that 250 falls like right in the middle of where our peer cities are. So if that is the number, I would be, I would be in support of that.
All right. I think that, I think that I'm still going to push for what's, what's printed. Because I, I, I think the, the activity is the same, whether it's 250 or 500. I appreciate, I, I think this conversation was actually very rich. And, and it, it shows the diversity of this council. And it also shows the collegiality. So I, I respect that. You actually just talked about what I was going to say. There are over 20, 22,000 cities and towns. We're the number 15 best-run city. You know, we are, we have a triple-A credit bond rating. And there are many checks and balances. I think this, it, it really just kind of goes to the preference of being able to discuss things in the public domain or not, which I respect. I, but that's all, that's why we see things differently. You know, we, we have different approaches. I am just, I am so ready to just get us to evolve as a functioning council and, and evolve the city as well. Because there are some, there's some pretty aggressive expectations that, that we're, you know, starting to pressure on the, on the city staff. You know, I, things like, I mean, I think we're getting caught up in planning. We just had no public hearings the other night because we're finally through the backlog. However, we have yet to celebrate the opening of the rail trail because it's delayed and delayed and delayed. And all of these things, it's not directly connected, but they are connected. And, you know, that, I think that, you know, an efficient government should be a new culture. And, you know, we are efficient to a particular degree, but there are some changes that we can make. So I'm in full support. I, I'm, I'm empathetic to the actual concerns. And it does make me, you know, think through it. But I'm, I'm also thinking, you know, practically, you know? Yeah, I, I do support it, whatever is printed.
Yeah, I support the manager's ask. My, my threshold for saying no to a manager is very, very high. We, you know, we pay them handsomely to, to study the stuff we don't study, to look at the metrics in the market and come back. And when I get to that point, I promise you, there's going to, it's probably the onset of another conversation when I start getting to that point. I, I don't think there's anything unreasonable about this ask. I think it's supported by best practices in history. So, but what, of course, whatever the council, whatever the council speaks, will speak. But me arbitrarily picking a number between 15 and 500,000, I don't, I don't know what the, the, you know, the basis is. I assume, I assume the manager did his due diligence and asked for a reason. So my default setting is say yes until he gives me a reason to say no.
All right, Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Councilmembers. I've been purposely quiet while you debated this. And I think you've done an excellent job hitting on a number of key factors job hitting on a number of key factors that need to be considered with this request. I'm grateful for your consideration. And as I've shared with all of you individually, I have a recommendation, but not advocacy for this. I want the council to be comfortable with the number. My recommendation is based on efficiency and business practices, and I understand the concerns that have been raised that speak to lower levels. My obligation to you is to bring you the recommendations that support our business practices in addition. So with these recommendations, the one, the only information I want to offer, because I think there is an obvious understanding that for most of these increases, there is a more modest increase, but for services, there's a substantial increase. I just wanted to explain my reasoning, and it's fairly straightforward. And if you look at when the ordinance was adopted in 2009, it is clear that the council who adopted that resolution had a particular interest in keeping the threshold low for services, but none of us could identify what the rationale for that differentiation was. It was clear that the other thresholds were, they were comfortable at a higher level. The threshold for services were low. If I could identify that, I'm sorry.
There's a recession going on.
If I could identify and document that for you, I would certainly bring that forward for you to be able to consider. Given that I could not find a rationale there, my main rationale in the recommendations I made was benchmarking against our peer cities who have similar-sized budgets, therefore similar-sized business practices. And I felt that that was the most reliable information for me. So understanding that is a substantial increase in service contracts, my rationale for the recommendation was what appears to be in line with where our peers are at. And so I was simply driven by peer city with an understanding that it was a substantial increase. And again, if I had a rationale for you why it was already lower, I would certainly daylight that, but we simply didn't have it. So the only other government I found that had a lower threshold is, in fact, Durham County. They have the 100,000 threshold, which is below their other levels of authority. And so with that, that's my recommend, that was my recommendation. As I've said before, we are very comfortable to work with whatever level of purchasing authority that you decide to delegate to the staff, and that's, those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just go ahead, because I'm not sure what was pulled.
So number nine will be on GBA. All right. Item number 19, Councilmember Cook. Report on wildlife feeding. I'm sorry?
Thought that 18 was pulled by a resident.
That was discharged during Citizens Matters.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is coming in front of the council on the mayor and others' requests to have a report before we heard, saw the ordinance that came forward. So the report is in there, but I don't know if we, if staff wants to give us just a little briefing on what is included, what we can find, and maybe what guidance you're seeking in order for that ordinance to come forward on the next council work session.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Protim, Carmiche Wallace, Assistant City Manager and Acting Director of the New Housing and Neighborhood Services Department. I am here, and as a commitment from the city manager for the administration to provide a response to the request made by Councilmember Cook to perhaps adopt an ordinance that would regulate or ban the feeding of wildlife. You might recall that some residents from the Trotter Ridge community came before the council in November 2024 to complain specifically about squirrels and the conditions that the squirrels were creating. I think at that time, there was some discussion that was on the heels of a long discussion that had been occurring for several years around deer bow hunting. So I do want to provide that as context for this not being the first animal-related complaint that has been brought before a city council, this city council, but then also previous city councils. The manager committed for the staff to do some research. There was some work that the city attorney's office did as well, so I want to thank the city attorney's office for their assistance with this work. We did identify three, I do want to acknowledge Alexis John. She's not here today. Clarence Harris is here from representing code enforcement. Alexis John is the Assistant Director of what was Neighborhood Improvement Services, but Alexis is out on leave, and so I just want to acknowledge her contributions to this initial body of research. So we did identify, we, meaning Alexis, and in turn, identified three jurisdictions in the state of North Carolina that has a ban or rig, ban, B-A-N, on the feeding of wildlife. Sometimes we use wildlife and wild animals interchangeably, so I do want to acknowledge that. Those three jurisdictions in North Carolina were the town of Hillsborough, as well as the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. Asheville and Buncombe County, as I'm sure many of us know, have an abundance of bear. So many of their complaints about interactions with wildlife pertain to bear. But in the town of Hillsborough, they indicated that they do not enforce, that was a key piece, about the information that was identified. The regulation is primarily identifying the infraction when possible, but then also following up with education. There aren't any civil penalties that are issued, but more or less just an awareness of the situation that occurs when property owners or residents do not contain conditions such as food, things like that, that attract wild animals. So as it relates to Durham, we do have a couple of instances in the ordinance that speak to animals. That's included in the agenda memo, but in the event that folks are listening or watching, I will identify what those are. It's actually Section 2 of our code, and birds, Durham has a bird sanctuary designation in Section 6-2 of our code. Shooting or wild, shooting or poisoning wildlife or deer archery is addressed in Section 6.3. Foul at large or impounding is addressed in Section 6.6-4, and livestock on sidewalks are addressed in Section 6.5. So there's not currently any language that addresses squirrels in particular, but we want to bring this item forward so that the council could have some conversation. One, to determine whether we want to establish an ordinance here in Durham that will regulate the feeding of wildlife. If the council chooses to adopt an ordinance, then we would certainly need some direction or guidance on what you would like to see in that ordinance. There have been some considerations included that we would ask that you consider if the decision is to adopt an ordinance. And one is to have a definition of wildlife. Number two, what actions are prohibited? There are some concerns about, are we looking to address specifically feeders or devices that are utilized or purchased for feeding squirrels, or might be intended to feed birds or some other animals, but squirrels take advantage of that? As well as what the enforcement, who will be doing the enforcement in consultation with the city manager? There is a recommendation that if the council makes this decision, that the code enforcement division within Housing and Neighborhood Services be responsible for enforcing, enforcing the ordinance. And then subsequent to that, what does enforcement look like? Do we want property owners to be penalized? Do we want property owners to be educated? Do we want, just what the extent of those consequences would be? So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have for me, but I will acknowledge upfront that Clarence Harris is our code administrator, and so he's here with us today in the event that you have some questions specific to the code.
Thank you for that summary. Colleagues, y'all know exactly what my ask is. We've had this issue that was brought up by constituents. We talk a lot about being responsive in a timely manner. We're looking at almost a year here on this issue, and it was brought to me prior to it being brought in Citizens Matters. There have, we've done some research. The city attorney and I have looked at some of these codes, not only in North Carolina, but in other cities across the country that restrict feeding in such a way that doesn't make it accessible for other types of wildlife outside of birds. So very much want to ensure that, like, y'all know that there's nothing about this, my intent, or I think the community's intent to, like, forbid bird feeders or anything of that sort. But what they have done is looked at feeders that are meant to attract other types of wildlife, like troughs and things that are on the ground or open, et cetera. So I'm happy to speak more in detail about any of those things, but it would be my ask that we just get something on the books so that we can address these community concerns. And I know y'all probably remember, but we talk about squirrels, and I think it sounds silly, but they're doing, like, lots and lots and lots of damage in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods, as well as they're brought in from the woods, attracted to whatever people keep out. And in this case, there was literal, like, troughs full of peanuts. We have folks with peanut allergies who are actually, like, in danger. Then there's, like, issues of having increased wildlife in the area, and what that means for residue and safety, health and safety for excrement and that sort of thing. And then also just the sheer damage from them chewing through vehicles and, like, parts of their homes. I mean, it's, like, pretty extreme. So that's my ask. I don't think that I have any interest in criminalizing this activity, but I do think that an educational piece feels attractive to me. And, yeah, anyway, I'm happy to hear if anybody else has any thoughts on that.
I just have one question either for staff or Councilmember Cook. So just in reviewing the memo, it says that the review of complaints and calls for service about concerns about wildlife eating, that those are rare. Can you give me, is there a number?
No, so, great point. So in that same section, it actually speaks to Durham One Call, does not typically document, so we're not able to quantify the calls that come into Durham One Call. What we were able to quantify is the information or data that's been collected by the zoning staff, and so that speaks to chicken and roosters. I think that's a little bit further in that paragraph. But generally speaking, it is not a pervasive issue that we are aware of.
There's no data on, like, the actual number of calls about wildlife, you don't have that.
That's correct.
And can I speak to that really quickly, too? I know that by the time that the things got to the city, lots of folks had already called the county because they have the wildlife enforcement, and that are, and you've heard this in the Trotter Ridge conversation, or, excuse me, in the, sorry, oh, yeah, wait, no, I don't, the bow hunting ordinance, that there, we, yeah, okay, sorry, I'm getting my neighborhoods confused. That, that position isn't always staffed, and so folks had gone back and forth quite a while with the county and sheriff's department, trying to get those services before those complaints came to the city. So that also might make up for some of the lack of calls.
Just want to go on record and say, I lived in Trotter Ridge. I'm so sick of those squirrels. So I get what the neighbors say. I know it sounds silly, but they cause havoc. I think my, my question is, is there an opportunity to work with the county since they have some department that does animal enforcement or something?
So the manager and I did have some conversation around this in particular. The county's work is primarily around emergencies, and so, like, deer, deer that's hit, that's in the public right of way, for example, and the county's action is usually on capturing the animal. I don't think the intent here was to capture the squirrels. I think the intent was to address the behavior of the property owner and change modified behavior through addressing the property owner and what we are, what the council is expecting them to do or not do to decrease the presence of squirrels.
I think I'm about to resubscribe to the listserv, because I know what's going to happen if this passes, and it's going to, you know, be some celebration. Yeah, good point.
Oh, okay. No, no, you're the mayor. So I, so when we had, we had a localized incident with the deer culling, the culling thing, which we didn't pass, we haven't passed that yet. And an ordinance, well, okay, we voted it down? An ordinance has, it has universal impact, although these things are being introduced to us at a local level. So I'm just, and, you know, when we pass an ordinance, there's got to be some consequence, and we don't want to criminalize it, to Councilmember Cook's point, and I agree with her, but we got to do something if it's an ordinance, if, once we, you know, put the city's imprimatur on it. And I'm intrigued by the educational piece. I'm wondering, so we, what are we telling folk not to do in, you know, around the whole city because of what happened in Trotter Ridge? And because we can't pass a localized ordinance, I'm wondering, is there some in-between number or in-between method or place we can stop to kind of address, to help our friends in Trotter Ridge with the squirrels? Yeah, something incremental with, because I'm wondering, ordinance, what's going to be the punishment? And do we want to, and what's going to be our bandwidth for enforcing it? And to the earlier point, we're not getting a whole lot of calls about this type of stuff. I'm just wondering about crafting a response that's commensurate with the level of the issue, rather than a full governmental ordinance, if at all.
One more question on the end of that is also, what is the current, I know when people's alarms go off, there's some, there's a method we go through, it's like a warning, and then this, I'm out.
False alarm. False alarm fee. Yes, there is a, assuming that the, this is actually a finance item, so I don't know if I can phone a friend from finance, but, false alarm. So as somebody, I mean, I can speak as my personal experience, but there's, there's an initial notice that's sent to the property owner that says, we received a, an alarm. And I think, I think you're given, like, one time grace, so to speak, and then after that, after that one time, I think there is a fee. Do we still charge that fee?
$75.
And Ms. Wallace, and Councilmember Freeman, if you'll allow me, I might answer the question in a different way. I think the more relevant answer might be, how does code enforcement handle, I mean, because while, while the alarm is a question, I think, I think we would most likely recommend a process similar to our current code violations, and so perhaps having Clarence just describe, you know, what happens when somebody calls in weedy grass or? Okay. Okay, we can answer the alarm question if you like. I just, that's a different body of enforcement for the city, so since this would likely be code enforcement, you know, I thought that might be the more relevant. I'm happy to have both answers if staff are available for that.
Let Clarence get some.
Good, get some, Clarence, take that.
Good afternoon, Clarence Harris, Housing Code Administrator, Department of Housing and Neighborhood Services. In relation to the enforcement action, we would consider actually doing additional research and, as it relates to the educational piece, and determining, you know, what are, what are we identifying to be in particular in violation, whether it's actually the feeder itself or the activity of leaving food out for the squirrels to obtain. But during that process and some code enforcement processes, we would actually identify the conditions of the violation, meaning that we identify the property owner to be in violation of those conditions. And usually what will occur, we will actually reach out to that property owner and make them aware of those conditions to be in violation. And in most cases, there is a discussion as it relates to the educational piece or the impact that these conditions are having on the community. Prior to that, I mean, after that, following that, those conditions, we would send notices to the property owners, making them aware of such violations. One of the resources that we did obtain from North Carolina Wildlife Resources and Commission is that during, as it relates to Asheville and Buncombe County, they technically did not have a lot of information or a matrix to identify the impact or the effectiveness of such citations, because as it relates to their communications, they shared, they are still an issue with feeding of the wildlife. However, they, he did share that there is a significant improvement as it relates to the educational piece or sharing of the information as it relates to the impact of feeding wildlife. So to answer the question as it relates to code enforcement process, we would first identify the property to be in violation, educate the property owner, send notices to the property owner of potential violations. And then most likely, it would be challenging to actually remediate. In most cases, our department will actually, we utilize a rapid response team, the impact team, for remediation and/or contract services to remediate such violations. This may proven to be a challenge, so we will most likely look at some type of fines or fees associated for actual punitive or not punitive, but some type of corrective measure.
Colleagues, Council, please, Council.
I just, I just want to say that I think we should bring the ordinance forward, and so I just want to answer the questions that staff needs tonight, and then I think that we can have a conversation on the actual ordinance when it comes forward on the work session. So I just want to, like, limit our conversation to that, because I'd already asked for it to be put onto the next work session agenda, and I do think that that's responsive to folks. And so that's my ask, is that we just sort of focus on these few things, few pieces, which I know y'all are asking about the education piece. But that is, that's my ask today, and I don't, it's not coming from me, it's coming from the community, so I'm not necessarily, like, pushing it one way or the other, or just bringing it, that's all.
Okay. This guy, I know he about to have a whole law.
I just want to post it in the Facebook group.
So Councilmember, you're saying, you just want to, you want to direct staff to draft an ordinance and bring it forward?
Yeah.
And then we can look at that, and then we can decide whether we like it or not.
Yeah, we, like, gave that a thumbs up last time. We said that we would do an ordinance in two work sessions if we got a report from staff in one work session, so this is our report from staff. And so I just, I feel like if we wanted, if we want to say that we have an ordinance that comes forward, then we can, like, kind of talk about the more specific details, but just to answer the questions that they need for moving forward. And also, I don't know if, Madam Attorney, if you want to speak to what would be helpful to you as well, because I know you've been looking into the ordinance as well.
Can I insert a clarifying point, because, and correct me if I'm mischaracterizing the conversation. I didn't think that the ordinance was a foregone conclusion. I thought the report was supposed to help us determine whether or not we were going to move to ordinance, because if that was the case, we could just brought the ordinance. I mean, the whole point of this conversation was to determine the viability and appropriateness of the ordinance. It was my understanding of the conversation. That was mine, I mean.
Yes, my specific ask was to bring the ordinance today, and so what we had decided last time was that we would have a staff report before the ordinance so that we could, that we could narrow down the language for the ordinance. I don't think it was ever, like, we're doing that instead of bringing the ordinance forward. It was sort of like, we have, we'll have some more information, kind of how we did it around the bow hunting, where we, like, had the staff report first, and then when we got to the ordinance, we, like, had all that information. We had already heard a staff presentation.
Right, I remember the staff report part to facilitate the conversation. Go ahead, Councilmembers.
Yeah, no, I feel like this is the same as the bow hunting thing, and I think I was the one that sort of brought that forward. I felt like the residents deserved, like, an answer from the city council, and so we got, we had the ordinance, and we decided we didn't, we voted it down, so. To me, this is the same thing. I think, you know, if we want to be responsive to citizens, I think drafting something's fine with me. I may not support it, but I think we should bring it forward.
Okay.
I think based on this discussion, we have enough information to draft an ordinance that contains sufficient definitions and describes the conduct that the city is trying to regulate. I think the remaining questions would still be enforcement-related, and how the education piece fits into, you know, the ordinance. But we could certainly draft something based on prior research that we've done, and council would then just have to provide additional direction on where it lives, to what and how, to what extent and how it gets enforced.
All right. Councilmember, copy your.
That's fine. I just, sorry, this is like a Parks and Rec episode. I've been really trying not to, like, cackle the entire time.
The government's too involved in our lives.
Yeah, I'm just like, this is, so, a couple of things, as long as it can be somewhat comical, where people, like, don't feed the bears, don't feed the squirrels. I think that, because, yeah, and I can see why Asheville has bear problems. Folks in Boone also have bear problems. It's real, they're just giant raccoons. They, yeah, well, not those bears, but they're scary. So I think that, yeah, I'm not interested in any, like, people need to stop feeding the squirrels, and so essentially, just can we write an ordinance that's like, stop feeding the squirrels, you're making it bad for your neighbors? The end. Are you sharing that you're part of this?
Colleagues, anything else on squirrels?
Colleagues, anything else on squirrels?
I do have one staff request, so appreciate Councilmember Cook asking staff. I know what, what we need to move forward and I know the attorney has addressed what we need for the ordinance. The one other matter I think that, that came to my attention from the deer bow hunting ordinance is whether or not council has an expectation that between now and the hearing of the ordinance, that we engage in any sort of public notification that an ordinance is being considered, or if you just want it brought forward. I know that there were people who expressed displeasure in the deer bow hunting ordinance to find out that changes were being proposed and that we had not done any sort of public information campaign. So I, I am not advocating for or against one, but I would not want council to be surprised if we just brought an ordinance forward and understood that we only placed it on the agenda and did not do anything else with it. So I, I would appreciate direction on that point.
I, I would, I would think that we, I mean, a guy's feeding deer and then the government passes a whole law for, for the city, I would, I would think we would need to do some type of notification. That's, that's me. Colleagues?
I mean, I do feel like there's a difference between like changing the hunting ordinances and restricting feeding of wildlife, which I think is not a thing that generally people are maybe doing. So I, I feel fine about this being the official notice, but I am happy to defer to others if, if folks feel strongly about it. I don't know.
I gotta say, when the, when the county was having their like cat conversation about caption release, it got real heated, so. I remember that.
You'd be surprised what people are into.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can, can we call it the don't feed the squirrels engagement? Sorry.
All right, we, we got to bring this back. We have, we have young people here like, is this how city council meetings work? Sometimes. So.
By either way, just, just. All right. I think, yeah, I think we're, I think, yeah, I think as, folks, we all, we need to sort of like, we need to keep moving, you guys. I think we need, yeah, given your comments, I think we should do some notice on this, yeah.
All right. Thank you, colleagues, for great conversation. It was great. Item number 20, approval of ordinance revision, revision to chapter 10, article six, housing code, section 10 dash 241. We do have some speakers on this item. Councilmember Cook, you are listed as a resource person. Do you want to give any framing remarks or you just want to go straight to speakers? I'll, I'll defer to you.
I'm happy to give a very, very brief framing remark. So thank you, Clarence, for not going anywhere. This is another code enforcement situation. So this is actually something that I talked about in my interview for city council for my appointment to this position and something that I was really excited to see that several members of the community, including the Riverside Housing Group, brought forward. So this is an added layer of protections for tenants who are facing extreme habitability issues. So the state defines imminently dangerous situations for tenants, but it doesn't have any follow-up to that. And then the city code also, of course, says that you can't have any of these imminently dangerous conditions. They don't define it that way. It's just in their list of violations. This would be sort of bridging the gap to allow tenants a little bit more control because they don't own the property, they don't get a say in how city ordinances are, how they impact the units in which they live. So this is just a tool to allow tenants a little bit of extra protection. It is on the books in two other municipalities in North Carolina, and it has been used for many, many years. It was recodified in Charlotte in 2019, and then Pittsboro put it into their code in 2022. So you've seen recent action around it. We've also seen recent cases where attorneys that are tenant advocates have used this, and it's gone up through the Supreme Court, I mean, sorry, through the Court of Appeals, and so far has been used in a way that's effective. So I think I'd be interested to hear what the speakers have to say and happy to answer any questions after they've had an opportunity.
Thank you, Council. We, Councilmember Freeman?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate Councilmember Cook staying focused on this issue and bringing this forward. And I'm excited to hear what folks have to say around it.
All right, let's get to it. I'd like to welcome Jack Holtzman, Milo Graber, Anne Rebeck, Nick McLeod, and Donna Batista, our first, was that five? I think I may have skipped a name. I'm sorry. After, after Milo Graber's Ezra Gustav Norberg, card was stuck, then Anne Rebeck, and then Nick McLeod. And then Donna Batista, you'll be after that, and then Italo Medelius. Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Thank you. My name's Jack Holtzman. I'm a retired housing attorney, and I'm speaking here in favor of the motion to revise our housing ordinance to include this section 11, similar to what Charlotte has in its housing ordinance. Adoption of this would strengthen the ability of both private and nonprofit housing attorneys to advocate on behalf of tenants. Back in 2019 and 20 through 2021, I, as a senior attorney at the North Carolina Justice Center, together with the Charlotte Center for Legal Advocacy and the private law firm of Robinson Bradshaw, we, using this ordinance, filed a class action lawsuit against an out-of-state property owner where the city had determined that there were housing code violations that were dangerous among those imminently dangerous sections of the housing code in Charlotte. After about two years going up to both federal and, and coming back down to state court, we were able to settle that case for about $550,000 for the tenants who had been experiencing these extreme habitability problems. I think that whether the specific rent prohibition section of this ordinance revision is going to be enforced by the city attorney's office or not, it would strengthen the ability for those of us in the private housing advocacy market to be tenant, stronger tenant advocates. There is the issue, you know, whether or not the city has authority to do this, whether there's a preemption issue. I don't think that, that the city should fail to enact this important housing tool because of what might possibly happen sometime in the future. Like Councilmember Cook mentioned, I think Charlotte and Pittsboro each have this ordinance. Housing advocates have been able to use it. It has not been challenged. I think that it's an important tool that should be adopted here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us, sir. Milo Graber? Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Milo Graber, and I'm a senior at Riverside High School, as well as the founder and leader of our Affordable Housing Club. I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance and the, for the prohibition of, for landlords to collect rent when there are imminently dangerous conditions in a housing unit. Affordable housing is one of Durham's most urgent issues, as we all know. It affects the logistics and DPS, and we all see the effects of the affordable housing crisis here in Durham. There are limitations on what we as a city can do because we are a Dillon's rural state, and there are many things that are preempted by the state explicitly, such as rent control. However, this tenant could be a thing that we can pass to give tenants more tools to protect themselves from eviction for non-payment, even if they're pro se. And it would basically outline clearly if any of these conditions are present and someone is evicted for non-payment, they can use this ordinance in court to get their rent abated or refunded, which can be critical to keep people in housing. I have heard feedback that there are worries about passing this ordinance because the state might decide to step in to preempt it. But I don't think that we should not pass good policy now just because we are afraid that we might lose that policy in the future. We shouldn't make our policy decisions out of fear, and we shouldn't be afraid to lose the power if we weren't going to use it in the first place. Furthermore, similar ordinances have been used in other municipalities here in North Carolina, such as Charlotte and Pittsboro, which have been mentioned, but also in Pineville. And those ordinances have never been invalidated or challenged. The Charlotte version was even cited in an unpublished Court of Appeals case earlier this year. So I think that by passing this ordinance, we could have better protection for tenants and that it would just generally be a good policy decision. I appreciate your time and thank you for your consideration. Have a good day.
Thank you so much, Milo. Did you say an Affordable Housing Club?
Yeah.
How old are you, Milo?
Seventeen.
Outstanding. Thank you for being with us. Ezra Gustav Norberg? Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Is that working? All right, great. Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Rory Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. My name is Ezra Norberg, and I am here as a member and a representative of the Riverside Affordable Housing Club. And Milo actually got me in on the Affordable Housing Club in order to speak on this issue. So I'm here to speak in favor, to speak in favor of item 20, which would permit rent abatement to renters living in properties found to be imminently dangerous to health or safety. To me, this seems like a perfectly reasonable ordinance. It, it follows like the basic standard of living and allows for dignity and fairness offered to people living in conditions that aren't necessarily ideal, conditions that might be dangerous to their health or, health or safety. So if a home is unsafe due to fire hazards, unsafe wiring, pest infestation, or lack of heat or potable water, I don't think that a tenant should be legally obligated to pay if they're in this condition of suffering. And I know that members like my friends, members of the wrestling team that I'm also on have in the past struggled to be able to make it to school or make it to practices due to living, basically, living in unsafe conditions or unhealthy conditions, such as not having access to clean running water or living in insect-infested homes. And so I think that this would like positively affect members of the community, but especially like many people that I know, my friends, my teammates. And I think that this would be really good for them. I also think that we can't live in fear and not pass this bill because of fear of, like, retribution or, or it not going through because similar bills, similar ordinances have been passed in other places. And I think that it's important enough to try to get it through, even if it doesn't work out. I think that this is important enough that we should make a case for it. And lastly, I feel like it, something, something like this is good because it holds members of the community accountable for, you know, negligence and allowing their renters to live in potentially dangerous conditions. And I think that that's really important. And so for these reasons and more, I would ask you to please vote yes on this proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ezra. Excellent job, Riverside Affordable Housing Club. It's really impressive. Anne Rebeck? Good afternoon.
Just really quick, as they're coming up, Ezra and Milo want you to stop by the mayor's office. I wrote you an excuse letter for school.
I was going to ask him about their hall pass. Yeah, totally was.
She's working on it right now, so you'll be able to take that back to school. All right.
And a selfie. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yeah, thanks for having me. I am actually just here not to make a formal statement from PA, but really just to talk about process. Six or eight months ago, eight months ago, it's been a while, they reached out to the PA asking if they could be connected with our housing team. And sure enough, when they came to our first in-person meeting, the team's response to them was, as was with yours, Riverside High School has an Affordable Housing Club? Okay, go Pirates! And so it really became sort of like, for lack of a better metaphor, like a lot of aunties around them, connecting them. And what was so beautiful was, and then they just did the work. So they went to multiple Coalition for Affordable Housing meetings, met with the same kind of response. They met with many, I am on the receiving end, sorry, I should say I'm copied on many emails. So I see the work go by, even though I'm not really doing anything. And so a lot of emails to attorneys in Charlotte, emails to your attorneys. Absolutely want to say thank you so much for your time, Councilmember Cook. A lot of mentoring from you and super appreciative of that. And I think actually the people that are showing up here today are also a testament to the hard work that they've done. So while I don't, I personally think this would be a great tool for Durham, and, and I just am like so impressed with these young people and, and look forward to reading about your decision in the Pirates Hook, the Riverside newspaper, which is where I get all my news. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you. Nick McLeod? Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Nick McLeod. I'm the executive director of the North Carolina Tenants Union. We represent tenants across the state through our tenant union locals in Asheville, Winston-Salem, Durham, of course, Raleigh, New Bern, and Wilmington. And I am here to speak in favor of this proposal. This would be a really valuable, critical addition to protecting tenants in Durham who are living in unbelievably dangerous conditions. I'm really grateful that Donna will be speaking after me. She can speak to that in much more detail than I can. But I think that we need to reckon with the fact that there are some meaningful inequalities in the way that these things are structured now. And a good way to think about it is this, if God forbid, in your home, you had a big hole in your roof, and you hire me to come repair that hole, right? And then I disappear. I don't return your phone calls, I'm not available, right? You are not legally obligated to pay me first and then go to small claims court to sue me to get back the money you paid. Because I committed, we've got to talk a lot about contracts today, I committed in a contract to do a set of work for you, right? And then I didn't do it. And therefore, you were totally within your rights to say, hey, you didn't hold up your side of this contract, I'm going to say, I'm not going to pay you for services that you did not provide, right? The way, what this would mean is it shifts leases from a category of requiring payment even when services are not rendered, right, to saying that these are, those obligations are meaningfully reciprocal, which is absolutely in line with the state law, and it's absolutely in line with what other cities have done. And I'll say that speaking to the experience of what has happened in Charlotte, this has been a meaningful tool that has really helped tenants be able to advocate for themselves and work with lawyers and other organizations to be able to make sure that they're not living in dangerous housing conditions. And I'm very pleased to say that there's a long track record here that they've not faced preemption challenges. This has been something that has been on the books for a long time. And so very confident that this is something that the city could absolutely step up and do and would make a meaningful difference for your constituents so that they're not living in dangerous conditions. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you so much for being with us. Donna Batista?
Finally.
She said finally.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, fellow Durhamites. I encourage all of you to check your emails. You get a picture of my mushroom I'm getting ready to tell you about. My name's Donna Batista, and I am a resident at JFK Towers. I've been there three and a half years, and this is the first summer I've had any air conditioning at all. That's because the fifth floor was renovated and I got to move from the third to the fifth. While in the third floor for over three years, there was no hot water in my bathroom the whole time I lived there. I had mushrooms that would grow behind my sink. It's a disturbing picture, but try living with that. The stains underneath are the spore. There's no way to get rid of it. It was very frightening, and I found out that the red that you see is the spore, and you cannot see it, and it's invisible to the naked eye. So imagine the fear I had, I have breathing difficulties anyway. I was too afraid to be in my kitchen, especially with no I was too afraid to be in my kitchen, especially with no air movement. We are not, right now, the whole building is under renovation and all but the second floor is finished. And we had gotten this month's newsletter. We are not allowed to open our windows because they were improperly installed. And if we do open our windows, that would be terms for lease termination. Whenever I had the, you know, we've had really hot weather the last few summers, but it just got hotter. I was given a portable air conditioner. Within five minutes, it was blazing. I thought it was gonna burst in flame, so I unplugged it. There's been dog poop throughout the whole building various times. And I went to the manager's office just Tuesday before going to my volunteer job. And I was reporting it and I looked down and went, oh, there's some right here in front of your desk. It's pretty disgusting. We have had serious problems. There are three elevators, one freight and two passengers. There have been more than one occasions when all three were out. A great number of patient, of people who live at JFK Tower are wheelchair bound. Anybody that was upstairs had to stay up there half the weekend. Those that were down, there were a lot of tears. They soiled themselves as they were in their wheelchairs. Bathrooms have been locked on the bottom floor for years. They've opened them up in the past few months, but they're locked on the weekends. I'm running out of time. This is very important. It's even more important than the sewage, which is really bad. I gotta talk really fast. Sewage problems from the seventh floor down to the first. People have poop coming up in their kitchen sinks and in their bathtubs. And one woman who was in her late 90s had to live with that poo poo in her bathtub for 10 days. And it just came back. Speaking about the fire department, I was told by the fire chief a few months before he--
Ms. Batista, your time's up and I'm gonna give you an additional minute.
Oh, thank you. Because I'm speaking for more people.
I understand.
I'm the only one that was brave enough to come. There's such fear of reprisal from not just me, but way I came today. People don't want to say anything because they're afraid that they'll get kicked out. We were sold, the building was sold to another company. And so far, it looks like there's not gonna be much difference in change. There's some serious problems, bed bugs. They are so bad that one week last summer, I must have eaten seven before I could get the sandwich to my mouth, before they got to my mouth. I don't want that kind of protein. I really want one thing, affordable, safe housing. I'd like to give a special thank you to Councilperson Cook. I worked very closely with Grace Wakeman as a volunteer in our assistance program for people who need help with affordable housing and paying utilities. I urge all of you to consider, all of the fellow Durhamites to consider making this reality.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us today. Etelo.
As he's coming up, can I ask you one question? Do we know when that was sold? Yeah. Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes. Good to see you.
Good to see you. All right, can I go? All right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. Etelo Medelius, I'm representing the North Carolina Tenants Union as general counsel today. First of all, sorry for the hair. The curls are doing their thing. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I see you're beating me at the nice hair today. So beautiful, beautiful work. So I don't want to take over what a lot of people have already said, the proponents. But the big enemy in the room that we've heard today, right, is preemption, Dillon's Rule, right? And actually, what a lot of people don't know is legally Dillon's Rule is actually very different in the state of North Carolina. It's kind of elevated Dillon's Rule, super Dillon's Rule, however you wanna call it, or absolute preemption. I've talked, I think personally with a lot of you in the council about, you know, maybe at some point being able to take on preemption constitutionally, go on a judicial offensive. We don't need to do that right now, right? This right here, I think, is a beautiful way to be able to exercise the sovereignty that we do have as a city, right? This falls right within code enforcement guidelines within our police power. It hasn't been challenged in Charlotte, hasn't been challenged in Pittsburgh. And I do believe that this is going to be a day one thing that will help us at the Tenants Union. Just five days ago, I wrote a demand letter against a landlord for this exact issue. Right now, we have a homeless tenant because there was a rat infestation, there was no heating, there was no kitchen, no window egress. And now because of the landlord not being able to fulfill their duties as a landlord, we have a homeless tenant. That's not okay, right? And we have to fight for the back rent. We have to fight for all of these things that this exact ordinance would fix. So as soon as we pass it, and thank you, Councilmember Cook and our good friends at Riverside, we're following your leadership on this. On day one, our members will have redress against their landlords. And as Nick said, we would have the same sort of reciprocity that normal contracts under contract law have to not pay somebody if they're not handling their end of the bargain. So this would make tenants' contracts, leases equitable, just like any other contract. I think it's a no-brainer. It's legal. It is fiscally responsible because landlords are then going to understand that they need to actually fulfill their obligations. That means less code enforcement. So I think this is a no-brainer. This is great. And I'm sure that it will pass unanimously. So I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Etelo. Good to see you. You got one more time to make a hair joke, buddy. Only one more. Thank you so much. Colleagues, that's all the speakers that we have that signed up to speak. I'll open now to questions, comments from honorable colleagues. Sure. Councilmember Caballero.
I was waiting for Councilmember Cook. I didn't know if she wanted to kick us off. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done. This is really good information, really necessary work. I do also just want to thank the city attorney's office for the memo. It's pretty thorough. I guess I'm interested in, it seems like there are some interim steps that we can take that set us up better. I'm in a, a number of years ago, when we were trying to figure out the tax relief program that we currently run, the county attorney at the time, the belief of the county attorney's office, if I'm remembering correctly, was that we didn't have the authority. Same thing, preemption, no authority, whatever. And that, but Charlotte did have a similar program. And so that is the justification that we used to move forward. I would actually like to have an understanding of if ours runs differently than Charlotte's. Like how, does that make sense, Madam Attorney? Because I, that's the best analogous situation that I've got in my mind as far as these kinds of questions have come up before, certain city does it, da-da-da-da. And so that's the one that I'm aware of. And so just if you remember maybe how that proceeded, that's a question I have.
I don't remember precisely how the long-term tax relief program was distinguished from Charlotte's, but there were some differences in the programs and where they were implemented from, if I recall correctly. In terms of this particular initiative, you know, again, you referenced the memo that we've written. We have not changed our analysis on this issue. And code enforcement is generally code enforcement. I don't know specifically how our code differs. Sophia Hernandez has done a lot of work on this issue for us over time and has been the attorney advising our code enforcement function for some time. So I'd like to invite her up just in case she might have some other ideas about how code enforcement might differ between Durham and Charlotte. But I'm not sure I'm exactly understanding the question.
I'm saying we have a case where we were able to figure something out before with a very similar situation, right? So what lessons did we learn? And what is the takeaway that then could be applied to the situation?
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure that the long-term property tax relief, if I remember correctly, we weren't able to tie that activity to initiatives that the city had been engaged in that had caused, right?
Yeah, because it started in Southside and then there was like, it had to be a, like tied, like directly to a city investment in a neighborhood.
Correct.
And then we were able to broaden what that definition really was. I, I'm basically trying, y'all's guidance is real clear. I'm just gonna be real clear. And the Riverside students have that memo. I think you sent it, I sent it.
Yes.
So like I'm, y'all said a thing. It's clear what y'all said. I also know that historically, we have run into this issue before and we have figured out what we often call the Durham workaround. So I guess my hope is that we can find a Durham workaround. That is basically where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor, did you wanna?
Hi, Sophia Hernandez, Deputy City Attorney. Helped with the research and I assist code enforcement. And happy to take any questions.
For the, for the benefit of the viewing public, would you just give us the Reader's Digest version of what the attorney office position is on this?
Sure. And this, this initiative has come up in years past. It is something that, of course, our elected officials and our community as a whole cares about. So we've done some research, I think in 2020 and in 2022. And then again, with this new recent unpublished opinion from the Court of Appeals that Councilmember Cook pointed our attention to. Our concern is around preemption, certainly, around enforcement, certainly. The, the unpublished opinion doesn't have what we call precedential value as far as authority goes. And so the fact that the Court of Appeals heard a case regarding the Charlotte ordinance and vacated and remanded, meaning kind of scrubbed the lower court's decision on that ordinance, doesn't tell us that yes, a court found that that law or that ordinance is in fact legal or not. And I think what the court did is it pointed to some potential flaws in the Charlotte ordinance, such that it says that a landlord can't collect any rent for any of the conditions listed. And so for example, in the case, it was that the windows, that some of the windows didn't open. And so you could have a situation in which one inoperable window would close the door to a landlord charging $1,900 of rent per month, right? You could see where that, the court might take issue with that and think that the ordinance is too broad and strike it down for those reasons. And so our research was to show that, one, we're not sure under preemption that we can do this because the Landlord Tenant Act is a fairly sweeping statute that the General Assembly hasn't acted. So we may be in preempted, sort of field preemption for doing anything in that, in that realm. We don't think that our code enforcement authority necessarily equates to being able to control what a landlord and tenant agree to as far as lease terms or when a landlord can run its business as collecting rent. And we do think that there are alternative existing remedies for residents right now, such as under the unfair and deceptive trade practices statute. And even that Court of Appeals pointed us to other situations in which they have said, under the unfair deceptive trade practices law, that, hey landlord, you have to abate your rent in a certain percentage based on the conditions of the home if those conditions make it unfit for human habitation. And so one of my recommendations is we certainly could consider an ordinance, code enforcement, of course, leading that way, that would list certain conditions that for our residents, we think are conditions that would make it unfit for human habitation. In that case, then folks, advocates like in this room could say, look, under the Durham city ordinance, for Durham-specific dwellings, this condition is present. And the unfair and deceptive trade practices case law says that a rent or a landlord has to abate the rent if one of those conditions is present because it makes it unfit for human habitation. So I think the authority to say, these are conditions which are unfit for human habitation, is there. What I don't think we feel is that the authority is there to say, and then the landlord can't charge rent at all, right? Because that's getting involved in the business relationship that is between the landlord and tenant that is us controlling that relationship in some way, which I do think that we may be preempted by field preemption. So that's kind of what we were saying. There's also obviously opportunities for education. The code enforcement folks are in the community. They do provide great notices and great information. And certainly, I could work with them to create an education campaign where they could say, hey, do you know that if these certain conditions are in your property, you may have right for rent abatement? And so that's another, Councilmember Caballero mentioned, interim step that we could take to help get these folks more educated about the rights they already have under state statute.
One of those rights, a real quick, specific question. I grew up in public housing. I remember being very young and we were once advised, because we had issues with our living conditions, to, to pay our rent into escrow. Demonstrat, is that something, we demonstrate that we're not disquandering the money, but withholding payment until the conditions were met. That was something we could do. Is that something that's, is that a right that's available to?
It isn't, because it would be us stepping into the middle of that relationship and saying, tenant, you can pay us and we'll hold the money for the landlord. We don't really have authority to do that.
I'm not talking about us. I'm just talking, does that fall within the rights of a tenant just on their own? They're just with their own attorney or they can't do that?
We are not aware that that right exists.
That's all right. Thank you. And I think your explanation was, was very, very helpful. Councilmember Cook, you went a way back in.
Yeah, I just want to address some of those things. And I want to thank you for your research on this. I, I take these cases and have been taking these cases for years. So I want to be really clear about what this ordinance does, ordinance can do. And you heard from people in Charlotte that have been able to use it. What you didn't hear is folks from Durham saying that they have been successful using it. Because though these lists are already in state statute about what makes a place habitable or inhabitable, the unfair and deceptive trade practices statute does not allow for this writing of power imbalance that you heard. And it also really doesn't allow for folks to be able to stay stably housed while they're getting these issues addressed. So I want to be, I want to just like walk you through what happens in Durham right now if you have a place that is uninhabitable. So if you are a tenant, you have a right to call the city code enforcement out. We all know that. The city code enforcers come and they provide notice and they put people, there is a lot of notice worked into the system. So if you've ever sat on this board, you would see, sometimes it's months, but sometimes it's even years where there's back and forth with the landowners. And so at some point in time, if you can't get ahold of the landowners, then they will recommend to the board to address fines. Meanwhile, you've got all this time going on where there has been a finding of an uninhabitable situation and a tenant is still responsible for paying rent. Their only remedy, their only remedy is to go before a court and say, hi, I have this issue. My ceiling is caving in. My floor is falling in. I have unsafe wiring and it's been sparking and I'm worried that I'm going to die in a fire. And then have a judge make a determination about what's that, what that is worth. The barriers to entry of this, y'all, are so high. They are so high. So you have to go to court. You have to file correctly. You have to bring your landlord to court correctly. I don't think that people just like know how to do this. It's often hard for me to do it and I'm an attorney who's been practicing for a really long time. Then you have to get a judge to make a value statement. What is it worth to your safety that you have wires that are exposed? What this does is it tells you, it's worth my entire rent. The value is done. The value statement is made. So this is a powerful tool. It allows tenants to then go before a judge and say, I'm on notice. My landlord's on notice. I have this response from the city code enforcement. The notice piece is already done. And it shows that there are failing statuses in these few imminently dangerous conditions. And I want to push back on the windows thing because the windows is actually really closely defined. It's operational windows with locks on a ground floor accessible to the unit. And that is defined really, really closely in state law. So we've got only a few. We've got 11 items that make these conditions imminently dangerous. Already defined, already, already done by state law. But Durham then would say, we've made a value statement and we know that this is worth your entire tenancy. You are unsafe if you are living with any of these conditions and we value that at the entirety of your rent. This is a huge reduction in barriers for folks. And it's been used in Charlotte and it's been used successfully. And I know that a Court of Appeals case that's unpublished doesn't mean that there's any holding about whether it's good or not good law. But what it does mean is that it's, it's open to public inspection. Those cases are public. And you heard from Attorney Holtzman earlier, that's not the first time that it's been used and it's not the first time that it's been used on a higher court level either. And so what we're saying is that, yes, like there has been, we've been trumpeting this. Charlotte has been using this. People, people use this all the time and nobody has come to preempt it. And so it's not, it's not good enough to just like define these tools as imminently dangerous. We've already done that. The state's already done that for us. This is taking the extra step that says Durham agrees and we've given a value to that. And we are gonna assist tenants in equating the power balance or slightly bettering the power balance when you sign a lease to allow you the power to be able to find if you need abatement and be able to, to get that abatement in a way that's like accessible to you and quick. What we see, if we don't have that, is that folks have to pay for a hotel room in the meantime. They have to use the, they have to go elsewhere to use the bathroom because their facilities aren't being able to be used, whatever the case is. Or they just leave because-- aren't being able to be used, whatever the case is, or they just leave because their conditions are that unsafe. And so this leads to housing insecurity and it leads to homelessness. And I want to say that it's particularly, particularly for the most vulnerable of our tenants. That's who we're doing it for. It's not for the folks who have access to resources and can move, because, yeah. And this is also not against all landlords, right? If you are a proactive landlord and you're doing a good job keeping your place open and you get your notice from the city and it says, hey, you're in failing status of something, and you fix it, all good. But it's for these landlords that are not present landlords or who are landlords and don't care and leave those conditions over and over and over again and let these families suffer major consequences, including and not limited to like major health consequences, that's who we're targeting here. So this is a value statement to me. I think it's pretty clear. It's been used over and over and over again. You've heard from both attorneys and also tenants' advocates how it can be useful immediately in Durham, so I hope you'll support it.
Attorney Rayburg, you wanted to respond?
I just wanted to make, make clear for the public that it, a couple of statements have been made that Charlotte has been doing this. I want to make it very clear that the city of Charlotte hasn't been doing anything. They do have an ordinance on their books, but they don't enforce it. Neither does the city of Pittsburgh, town of Pittsburgh, which was also referenced in the memo in your agenda, and I think that's a very important distinction. So they have ordinances on the books that the municipalities themselves are not willing to enforce. Whether that creates a tool for the private bar is a completely separate issue. I just want the public to understand that what's being asked is that the city adopt an ordinance that we do not believe municipal governments have the ability to enforce in the state of North Carolina.
It's, I definitely see and I support this. I also understand the practice of it. Is there, Councilmember Cook, I guess, like maybe resolution versus ordinance? Is that something, I mean, we're talking about a value statement?
I don't think practically that that would achieve the same thing in court.
Okay. So is it not, is it a matter of not necessarily being enforceable for XYZ, but yet still making, like giving it some meat for use in case there is litigation?
That's correct.
That's, okay, that's your goal, all right.
So it's not code enforcement, then? It's just if somebody sues their landlord? Like, I'm just trying to understand what the...
Yeah, I think it's an entry point for litigants, so tenants have the right to sue, probably, or I don't even know that they would agree, that the city of Charlotte would agree that they've created third-party rights, but that is apparently what's happening, is what you're hearing from the advocates, is that they are getting into court and they are at least arguing that there's a violation of this code provision, but the city is not in the middle of that argument.
Okay, so it's not the city of Charlotte's code enforcement doing anything?
Absolutely not.
And it's not the city of Pittsburgh's?
Absolutely not.
So it's not going to be our neighborhood, whatever it's called now, Housing and Neighborhood Services?
Housing and Neighborhood Services.
Thank you. Whatever it's called now. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be...
It would not be Housing and Neighborhood Services, not if we are following the model that Charlotte has in place.
Okay, I'm gonna let other folks, I still have lots of questions.
Well, just one more clarifying question, sorry. Is it... Let me come back. Just getting one kid, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to, it's like, oh, that's what I was gonna ask. I hope that doesn't go on the news. So let's say we did put this forward and we officially have an ordinance on the book, on the books, and, you know, a tenant sues their landlord because Durham City Council or the city of Durham has this ordinance. Is there a case where it's overridden because we put something in place that is unenforceable?
Apparently, that hasn't happened to date in the city of Charlotte. You know, there was a comment made that, well, Charlotte's had this ordinance on the books for a number of years and it's never been struck down. Well, the reason it's not been struck down is because Charlotte's not attempting to enforce it, most likely. And whether the issue of the validity of the ordinance, the ability of the municipality to enforce it, has ever come up in the precise dispute between a tenant and a landlord of, you're charging me rent for a dangerous and uninhabitable dwelling? I don't know. We can't say, right? Like, the only, the only case that we've seen has been the most recent, the Danzy opinion that Councilmember Cook brought forward, which we looked at and was not decided on the basis of the Charlotte section 11-45 at all. It was decided on other grounds, was my understanding. Sofia is the one who analyzed that opinion, but, so we don't know the answer to that. We don't know if the court will ever reach that question when dealing with litigants that don't include the city itself.
Right, and so, and so, Councilmember, because to your concern here, I guess there, if it hasn't been challenged, and I assume that we don't have enough information to determine what is it, uninhabitable, right? Like, a broken window versus...
I wrote it in the ordinance. I wrote it in the ordinance. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very, very detailed, yeah. That is, that is the point. It's just that we have detailed what makes it uninhabitable and we took that language directly from the state. And I will say, to answer the earlier question, one thing that the city does do is, is put the landlords on notice. So while we're not involved in litigation, there is a, there's a notice component of this that is done by the city, so.
Thank you, Matt Protem. So a couple of questions. So just to be clear, so what, even though Charlotte and Pittsburgh aren't enforcing this, what they did is what we're being asked to do, which is pass an ordinance. Okay, just to be clear about that. The second thing is, so what, what Councilmember Cook is saying, and I hear your point, that this limit, the current ability to go to court and get a judge, whatever, limits access, right? But just want to be, want to understand that what, what you're suggesting is this ordinance that would give people more access, that concern the city attorneys that in that case, it may get preempted, essentially, that we may not have the legal authority to do that, but that that's what you're saying is, it would give someone more access? And what you're saying is, the piece you gave in your memo, that you think has more legal standing, would be, would be the kind of thing where you have to go to court to get an abatement if your conditions were uninhabitable? Is that correct? Am I getting that right? So is the difference between like, one that's stronger for tenants, but maybe could be preempted versus one that's maybe, but maybe is like legally in good standing but may not be as accessible to folks? Is that the sort of, am I correct?
If I may, Councilmember Rist. So yes, to echo, Charlotte and Pittsburgh are not enforcing this ordinance, and I think that they are not necessarily sure that they can, so they have something on the books that they can't take action. That's generally not something we advise in the city attorney's office. And additionally, we feel more on the, it's like...
In the case that we can't take action, so you generally don't recommend an ordinance if we can't enforce it?
Correct, right? Because the idea is that we are acting under our police power, but we have no intention of policing. And so that is certainly something, I also think, given the landscape of the unpublished opinion and that the court, the Court of Appeals said, hey, the lower judge abated the rent by 15% because of the windows issue. We found that that was unsupported by evidence and arbitrary, so we are going to scratch that court's decision and send it back to that lower court. It looks like the Charlotte ordinance says you can't charge any rent at all if these conditions are present. I expect that if I'm the landlord in that situation and that law says I can't charge any rent, I'm going to probably push back on that a bit, because I'm going to say, you know, given that... I mean, I think that that's pretty straightforward. And also, as my memo pointed out, that there is no time limit either on the existence of the violation. And so, for example, not having an operable fridge, if the fridge is unoperable for 24 hours, 48 hours a week, again, under the way that the Charlotte ordinance is written, there would not be any rent that can be charged during that time period. And so I do expect that we'll see challenges. I would caution then, let's see what happens in a case that right now is dealing with this ordinance and see where that leads us. That is, again, me as a municipal lawyer, thinking about what's in the city's interest and what is in within our authority. I certainly understand that other folks and advocates in the community who are very concerned about tenants may feel differently. My opinion is based on the role that I have within the city.
Can I say one more thing, too?
Actually, I'd kind of follow it. So you suggested there's a case right now that we want to wait for?
Yes.
A specific case, or?
Yes, so there is the case that Councilmember Cook pointed to us, the case that I discussed in my memo a bit, is the court vacated what the lower court did and said, send it back and let the lower court deal with it again, based on the guidance that we have provided, meaning no rent charged, meaning unfair and deceptive trade practices is a potential avenue. So...
That was sent back to the...
To the lower court.
Right, and the lower court then now is gonna...
That just happened, so we assume that the lower court will take it back up, because that's what the Court of Appeals told them to do. We just haven't seen what's coming out of that, right? These things can take months to come back.
Of course. It could take months for it to come back to that lower court.
Yeah, or for the lower court to make a decision based on it.
Okay.
Right, because the, this Court of Appeals was concerned about how we calculate what the abatement might be.
Correct.
And so in other Court of Appeals opinions where they've used the unfair and deceptive trade practices statute, there's been some sort of expert testimony that says, based on this, this, and this, they abated at a certain percentage.
Gotcha.
Can I clarify? I just want to clarify something to earlier, your point. This ordinance would not mean that someone does not have to go before a judge and get abatement, okay? We are not like waiving that requirement. We cannot waive that requirement. That is, that's a statutory issue. What it is giving tenants the power to do is to have a valuation before they even go through the court process, whether that helps them in negotiations with their landlord, whether that helps them once they get to court and takes away a barrier. Those are ways that this tool can be used, but it doesn't go away, like, it doesn't remove the requirement for a judge to make a determination of abatement. And also...
But you could like, right away, have some, some legal basis for...
Right, I mean, it's much stronger positioned, but to go in with a notice from the city that says, like, you have failed in this, these regards, and to know then that, like, the value of that is your full rent, 100% of your rent, as opposed to having to go before a judge and plead your case, right? Because you don't have any power before you go to the judge to have any sort of conversation or like settlement issue with your landlord. And also, that case has been remanded back to the trial court, which is not going to be a binding court of law. So whatever is decided in Charlotte will not be binding on us. It will only be binding if something happens after that decision is made that brings it back up to the Court of Appeals and the Court of Appeals publishes an actual published decision and they have to decide to accept it. There'd be like, I mean, we have no idea if that will ever become binding law, so we're not like, I mean, I don't want to take, put words in your mouth, but there's no case to be like waiting on exactly. We know that this case is moving through the courts, but we don't have any sense that it will come to a place where it will be binding on us.
And if I, yeah, one more question, but if you want to, yeah. Respond to that, go ahead, yeah.
No, I'm not responding. I just wanted to highlight something that Deputy City Attorney Sofia Hernandez said, which I think is really important for the public to understand. It's not that the city attorney's office does not see that this could be an effective tool, it's that in our position, we are charged with best advising the city as a corporate entity on how it can legally and efficiently and effectively do the things that it does or it's authorized to do under law. And our analysis, again, just to kind of put a fine point on it, we do not believe that the city has the authority to enforce the ordinance as written, and because it would be the city acting within its police power, we generally don't advise the city to adopt ordinances under the police power that they cannot police and enforce. That's solely where we're coming from.
Gotcha. No, I, yeah, my last question was, and this goes back to your memo, you suggested that you wanted to suggest that we be, you're cautious about this because of issues of authority, preemption, and enforcement. So just to be clear, so on the question of preemption, this could get preempted, and if it were to be preempted, it would be preempted, right? But is there any, is there any further potential risk to the city that, like somehow we get sued or something, or what's the, what's the risk of preemption, just that it gets preempted?
So can I jump in on the preemption question, then I want you to answer this. So on the preemption question, Councilmember Rist, we believe potentially that the city is already preempted, right? So the part of the memo that talks about preemption of the field, as Attorney Hernandez said earlier, because the North Carolina Landlord Tenant Act is so comprehensive and so sweeping, it evidences intent on the part of the state legislature for localities not to get in and legislate on those issues. Yeah, they're like, we're defining how landlords and tenants are going to do business in this state, which to us is some sort of signal that, oh, cities and counties don't have the ability to regulate on this question. So that's the preemption issue. We believe that cities are probably already preempted from regulating in the area of landlord tenant behavior and business practices. Is that fair? And then can you give the second part of your question again?
No, that was it, yeah. No, thank you.
This is more a question for Councilmember Cook, because I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of, under the unfair and deceptive trade or whatever it's called, folks are having to go to court, and then this one, they're having to go to court. So walk me through, because I understand the power, you know, difference there and who has power and who doesn't, tenants versus attorneys, but I'm just trying to understand like the strength of the tool. Because if you're having to go, we don't have enforcement, and tenants are still going to have to go through court, what's, what's the difference? And it's just because I don't understand it. I've luckily not been in the situation.
Yeah, so this is what I was just trying to explain, which is that I do think that it's right that we are preempted from, I mean, we know that a judge has to decide if there is going to be abatement. The way that the, I'm just going to go back to like very basic landlord tenant law, but the way that North Carolina is set up, which is weird and not very tenant-friendly, is that a tenant owes rent regardless, and a landlord has a duty to keep their place habitable regardless, but these two things are not connected. So if you are not paying rent, you are still supposed to have a habitable environment, and if you don't have a habitable environment, you're still supposed to be paying rent. So we already have a major inequity here, and this is a North Carolina as a whole issue.
I'm sorry, I guess what I would like to understand is, I'm a person, and based on what is current law, the thing I can use is this unfair deceptive whatever trade thing. That is what I'm allowed to use. And you're saying, well, we want people to use this other thing.
Yes.
So I would actually like, I would like a, I'm tenant and I'm tenant. Walk me through what that process looks like.
Yeah, so what it looks like is that if you have this tool, and you heard from some folks who've used it in Charlotte and other places, if you have this tool, you are immediately able to have negotiating power with your landlord, because what you have, instead of a, I might go to court eventually and get this thing done and maybe a court is going to value it as highly as I do, what instead you have is, the city has already made a value statement about what this is, it's worth 100% of my rent. Instead of me going to court, let's talk about what we can do to get this fixed immediately. And then if you go to court, one of your barriers is removed, because you don't have to prove the value of the issue, it's already been proven at 100% of your rent. So it's not perfect, it's not a silver bullet. This is not like, gonna be like the end-all be-all for empowerment of tenants, because that's a state law issue. But this is a significant tool and it is used by advocates across Charlotte, and it is extremely, extremely helpful for them. So, and for unrepresented tenants as well, because you then have, you have something that's known before you go to court, which is, as of right now, like, you do not have that.
Then how does the unfair deceptive...
Yeah, so if you use an unfair and deceptive trade practices argument, you have to go before court, you have to get a judge to decide how much your issues are worth. Once a court decides that, then you get the difference in how much you paid versus how much your apartment would have been worth, so the abatement amount. And then, yes, and you would have already had to have paid it. So then you get it ostensibly back, and unfair, that chapter 75 allows for trouble damages, which is talked about in our memo, and so what that means is, if you can show that your landlord knew and they also like did it on purpose and they didn't try and settle with you, then you can also ask the court to treble or times three those damages. But that, that whole, and you can still do that process with this, but what it allows you to do is that you would already have a valuation, so you wouldn't have to worry about the abatement.
You're just saying you get to argue about different amounts of money, so it incentivizes landlords to negotiate on the front end. Thank you.
That's a great summary, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, were you getting ready to say something? I, I have a question. I, um, first off, I'm deeply resonant with what Councilmember Cook and what our neighbors have come and said to us. I, here's, here's, here's my question, here's my dilemma. I, here's my question, here's my dilemma. Can the city, can the city's voice be used to issue a statement of evaluation short of it being wrapped in ordinance? I mean, can we, can the city make a determination that a place is uninhabitable and arm tenants with that, short of ordinance? Is, can we just issue an opinion? Because as a lawmaker, I don't, and the school of government questions us against us. There's a very, very slippery slope to passing a law that I know I'm not going to enforce. And it even causes some ethical questions. And although this issue resonates with us, we as citizens, we as residents, I don't think we want, we don't want to go there. We don't want to cross the threshold where we're passing laws we know we have no intention of passing, I think. Because it opens us up to some other things. And when you use the police power, there's no greater power of the government than to coerce, to use violence or force to get you to do something, to take your money or take your liberty. That's not to be trifled with, I think. So when we cross that threshold of using that power, I think it's important for the preservation of the rest of our democracy and the rest of the institution for that to be taken seriously. With that said, I want to lean in on this issue. I mean, everything that's been said here. So I guess to my original question, are there ways that we can lend a tool to tenants, the city's voice certifying that this place, no human being should be living there, without it being an ordinance? Or does it have to be an ordinance?
Thanks, Mayor Protem. So I think one of my recommendations was that we could pass an ordinance that specifically identifies which conditions we feel are unsafe for human habitation. And I will lean on my code enforcement colleagues here. But certainly, we could come up with, if those conditions are present, we do an expedited code enforcement process. Precedent's already there for that. For example, we do an expedited process for lack of heat in the wintertime. And those cases come to the table within 30 days, sometimes 14 days. We have special meetings of the Housing Appeals Board to get those cases moved forward and to get code enforcement to act more quickly. So that, to me, does fall squarely within our code enforcement authority. And creating a list that not is only in statute, but also in local laws may get more buy-in for magistrates when they are looking at eviction proceedings and other things. So again, I do think that there are things we can do within our code enforcement authority, within our police authority, that would move us in that direction.
Would that also buttress the position of tenants to get in court? Would that strengthen their hand as well, having that declaration from the city?
And so how I have seen this used a lot is in eviction proceedings as a defense from the tenant. And so they're already there, that's how I've seen it. And certainly, I don't do this for a living on this particular area of law. But being there already, they could use, no look, this was an inhabitable dwelling. And we do see tenants using that when they come to, for example, file a complaint in Fair Housing, right? We have the, oh, they've already done an eviction proceeding and this place was terrible. And because they brought that defense, the landlord decided to kick them out for X, Y, Z reasons. And so I do think there's already some tools in place.
Colleagues, Councilmember please.
I have a question about that. So the way that we do emergency situations now is that we have a modified notice period and no right to a hearing because these things are emergent. And so would you then propose that all of the things on this list be accepted from our normal like notice requirement? And would you also then have it be that the city, because if we have, for example, no heat in the wintertime, what we see is that we have an emergency meeting and then the city actually does the repair on that if the landlord does not, or the owner does not do that repair. And then puts a lien on the property later on to recoup the costs unless they're paid outright by the landowner. So would, under this alternative suggestion, are you saying that all of these items then could go into that emergency category? And we would use that, we would then have a modified notice period? I mean, to me, it feels, that feels sketchier because I'm like, oh, anytime that we're like lessening the notice period and lessening the right to be heard, that feels more like of an issue that landowners will have, but maybe I do. And then the enforcement piece, like the city would go in and address those things and then follow the regular pathway and put a lien on it?
I certainly think that there are things from that list that, to me, feel like very reasonable to put in there. But again, I would rely on code enforcement as the subject matter experts to make a determination of what they want to include and what they don't, or what needs to be included based on the housing stock in Durham and what they're seeing. But I do think that a list could be created. And again, I trust your judgment on why you made the list. I just know I haven't talked to code enforcement staff about that list and whether they themselves have identified those, or maybe more items, that they would like to add. And so I just want to be cautious in answering, yes, 100%, everything on that list is something I could see in an expedited process. I do think we could create an expedited process. We already have that, based on a list that we decide that is, you know, supported by our subject matter experts here, that would still give us due process, but because of the heightened concerns for safety, we could make that due process notice shorter and the city'd act. I can't, I'm not the money person, so I can't speak to whether there would be money for the city to go and remediate all of these conditions. That would be on the city manager. But I do think the authority exists and already some of that structure exists.
Councilmember Caballero?
Yeah, this is a great, I mean, this is my, several of ours, this is our third cycle on this thing, y'all. Like, we've seen this every three to four years. People get real, you know, because it sucks. We all know that tenant law, I mean, we go to conferences and we hear what California's doing around tenant law and we want to cry. And then we talk about our community safety department, so then I feel a little bit better. And so, you know, this is like a cyclical thing. 2020, 20, I think it was Charlie, Councilmember Reese, who brought it several years ago, also an attorney with a group of advocates. Then there was another group of advocates, I think, during the pandemic when, yeah, and, thank you. Yes, when I think evictions were no longer, yeah. So I understand why we're here again. The other thing that's mentioned in the attorney's memo is the, to funding. I mean, there was the earlier thing that basically the District Attorney's Office doesn't have the subsequent, or the necessary resources to prosecute a thing we've already done. So back to that enforcement thing. I mean, to me, I feel like there's lots of paths that we already have clear legal authority to do that we might have to like put some, I mean, we already fund eviction. Yeah, like let's think of a package like we did. We did some of this with the tenant, the work that Councilmember Freeman brought forward. That's where I think we bolstered bilingual enforcement. We put a little bit more money there. We did some of this expedited thing. And so I guess that's where I'm at, because I'm also looking at the time. It's like, I think that this, I think we're on the right path. I really appreciate the work that the students and Councilmember Cook did and advocates did. What is there? What are the things? Is it also ensuring, because there's already things that we've done that we're not able to fully, we're not funding and it's a tool that's like not really being utilized. Because I get it, the District Attorney's Office doesn't have the money. There's other, anyway, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rist?
So on this issue of like sort of legal, like being on like sound legal footing, right? So are you open to the, to staff drafting this ordinance as recommended in the memo that would do exactly what you're describing here? And have that piece that would have, you're saying would have greater legal standing? Would you be open to that?
I have a few issues with it. The first is that like, I sit on this, I sit on this board, right? So I see the, not only the like regular complaints that come in front, but also the emergency complaints that come in front and how long it takes and how slow it is. And also like talking about enforcement, we don't, we don't go after people for their fines and fees that we assess. So we're not really enforcing anything on our board. We're assessing fees to landlords and they absolutely, or landowners, and they absolutely know that no one's coming after them for that money. So to me, it doesn't feel like a powerful tool. And also, we have the example of, literally, this language is taken, it's identical to Charlotte's. We have the example of how it's been used in Charlotte and the good work that it's done there. And so I guess I feel a little bit confused because I feel like we are hearing that it is, that it's, the problem is that we can't enforce it and we're not going to use our police power on something that we can't enforce. But then we're also hearing that it's not under the police power and we're actually preempted from using it at all. And so I understand that you can argue in the alternative, but like, we already have this ordinance, we know that it works in Charlotte, and folks have come and told you about its efficacy. And I can just tell you that its efficacy goes far beyond what you've heard today. And so my thought in like rewriting it to something that like has very little like to stand on, does not feel like, doesn't feel like a good middle ground for me.
May I ask a question? And to be fair, when, because I hear our very trusted city attorneys saying, when we say it's worked in Charlotte, what are the, what actually are the victories? I've heard one case alluded to, who's won? What's an example of a victory in Charlotte that we can, when we say it's worked? What does work mean? Does it mean they got into court and used it? Does it mean that ultimately they got their apartment fixed and didn't have to pay their rent? What does it mean when we say it's worked in Charlotte?
Yeah, I think it's all the above. I mean, I'm happy to have Attorney Holtzman come talk in a little bit more detail about his case. And I can also tell you that several of the nonprofit lawyers have restrictions on what they can and can't say in terms of public lobbying. And so you're not going to hear probably from those folks. But it happens at all levels. It happens before going to court. It happens as a defense for eviction, where folks are able to stay in their home. And it happens in an affirmative sense, where folks are able to recover money from living in unsafe conditions. So all of the ones that you mentioned.
I absolutely believe you. I'm just wondering, are there, can I Google a case where some, or is there, even anecdotally? Yeah, come, please, if you would.
Feel like I'm in law school.
So, hello again, Councilman Middleton. So the case that I was referring to is called the Lake Arbor case. That was the name of the property. You can Google that and you can see press reports from Charlotte about that case. There was not a specific legal claim that was a 11-45E legal claim. That was the ordinance that we've been talking about. But the unfair and deceptive trade practices claim, the unfair debt collection claim, both of those were based upon the fact that the city had determined that there were these dangerous, imminently dangerous violations in the unit and had already made that determination and that the value of the unit was zero. And that made us, it made it a lot easier for tenants to make that argument. We did not have to go through several more hoops of having a court determine what the value of the unit was that was already determined. We didn't have to go through a determination as to whether it was habitable or uninhabitable. Code enforcement had already done that. And they had gone through the notice and hearing process and had enforced those sections, but not the rent prohibition section. They had enforced the conditions, those conditions that were violative of that section of 11-45E. And in fact, we're assessing fines against the landlord for those violations. We were able to use that.
Why not the rent prohibitive part?
Why not?
Yeah.
Just because, I can't, I can't tell you, oh, you're talking about for us. I can't tell you why the city did or did not do anything. I can tell you that for us.
Any ideas?
Your counsel will need to speak with Charlotte's counsel. I can't tell you what their thinking was on that. I can just say that the stronger cases, the stronger claims for us, which allowed for treble damages, were the unfair and deceptive trade practices claims. But they were based upon the fact that there were violations determined by the city of those imminently dangerous code violations. So it was part of it, right? The fact that those determinations had already been made made it easier for the tenants to assert their abatement claims, to assert their unfair and deceptive trade practices claims. It took us two years. We started in state court, it got removed to federal court. We went back down to state court. After that two-year time period, we were able to settle on behalf of our clients.
Lake Harbor.
Lake Arbor.
Arbor.
Arbor, A-R-B-O-R.
Thank you, appreciate you.
And to answer your other question, there is like literally no record of eviction cases. This is like a real problem that we have, wherein we don't have records of this. So they're starting in small claims court across the state, which is not a court of record. So you will not be able to Google that, unfortunately. We can't even Google the sheer numbers, although I think we would like to.
Take y'all's word for it.
So just as we kind of close out here, welcome to intense, you know, public policy work. I just, the crossroad that I'm at right now is, and Councilmember Cook, you're deep in this, so please correct me if I'm wrong. We are looking to pass an ordinance. I think what would mean, I'm thinking about an ordinance versus a package that could be utilized versus, well, a package that could be utilized that's coupled with a resolution that states our values versus an actual ordinance. The ordinance, it sounds like it's either unenforceable or it's being placed on the books to be utilized as a tool for material, as a tool to materialize support for litigation. And I'm wondering if we could find a way to meet that, just so we don't get into practice of generating ordinances that we may not be able to enforce. But then again, there is no real cases, so that's not to say that this may not come to fruition one day. But what I am interested in is, I'm interested in trying to find a way to provide some tenant support because we just don't have it and they're vulnerable. So I have no idea, this has gotten really deep and wonky, but I think it's important. I am going to, I don't know whose lead I'm going to follow. It's like I, I don't know where I am. I just know I want support from our tenants and also want to make sure that we're practicing good governance. And unfortunately, I think we're placed in a disadvantage to where, you know, you know, I mean, we can be defiant and say, hey, you know, we're just going to do it. Or we could, you know, just make sure we stay, you know, to being able to enforce what we put into ordinance and then find a way to package and provide a resource, even in an expedited fashion. You know, if a tenant runs into a situation, they can call Durham One Call or whoever and say, listen, this is the situation. I need to execute the city's resource on tenants' rights or tenant support and utilize whatever resources we have in place already that was referred to earlier. But I do, based on just listening to everything we talked about today, I do believe that we can provide some type of support or resource to tenants. But I'm.
Yeah, I'll just say that this is not novel, but, and we have a city, well, we have two cities that actually have codified it, but one city that you know that where it's being used. But I'm going to push for it to move forward and I think it's going to be on GBA, clearly. Where it's going to be more discussion on that. But I think that you've seen it, to Councilmember Caballero's point, it's been coming up over time and time again. It is, you're hearing from the community and I can speak on behalf, because I am an advocate in that community, of the efficacy that this tool allows and the power balance that it just does the minimal to help shift to tenants. So I'm ready to move forward on it. And then we also have, for everyone's public knowledge, like we have an extra week this week in between our cycles. So we have three weeks until our council meeting. So I think that that'll give us plenty of time to get the answers that we need and be prepared to take a vote on it.
Is this one of the things you needed to talk to me about?
Uh, no.
All right, well, can we talk about this a little more?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. GBA?
Yeah, my brain is tired. All right, Mr.
Would we be interested in having this, another discussion on this? I mean, at least I picked up some questions, some, yeah, rather than move forward, if we'd be open to putting this over to one more? I've got some more questions. I know we're at time, but it's, yeah, it's important enough, I think, to, I really want to get this right. I really do. And I want to take seriously also what our, what our, what our City Attorney's Office said. But again, full disclosure, I'm, I mean, I want to vote for this. I, I'm deeply resonant with it, but I do have some more questions. And I think others of us just listening to the flow of the conversation. So will we be open? I'd like to recommend at least one more conversation about it, but that's just.
I'm not open to that. I do think that it's come before the council several times. You've had the advocates that have been here. You've also had the memo from the city attorney for quite some time at this point. And, and we've got this long period in between now and the meeting and we can have a conversation again at the meeting. I think that we, the work has been put into this ordinance as it is. And so to honor that and to honor addressing it in a timely manner, I think we should move forward on this if it fails at the meeting. And we want to bring up something different, then I think that we go from there.
I don't think, my point is, I don't want it to fail. And, and in fairness, we've never gotten this close before. It has come before the council before, but we've never had a conversation this in depth. We've never had a treatment of it with this much nuance. And, you know, I don't want to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. I, I think that there's a path for us. I would just like to have some more conversation, so.
I, I agree because I'm leaning towards supporting it. I just want to make sure that we can make it work. I just want to get it right. I'm definitely, actually, I'm definitely going to support it. I just want to make sure that we can just kind of, you know, just, just meet all sides of it. So.
And I, I just want to offer some clarification before, between tenants, unit, tenants, well, city tenants united and previous things, it was a menu of things, right? It wasn't just the one thing. So I want to be careful saying, oh, it's come up several times. There has never been model ordinance language provided to us, nor has there been, there's been analysis because in that case there were many items listed. So there was lots of analysis done, but we've not ever had this specific of an example in front of us. So I'm a fan of, of also, how about this? It's a thing to, you know, there, there's a really clear legal memo in front of us from our city attorneys and that's who we hire. And so at least for this council member, I need some real time about whether I'm, I'm, how I'm moving forward.
I'll just say that the three weeks seems like reasonable time. And because it's been, it's been very obstructionist kind of moving it forward from 2020 and 2019, like it just felt really like a lot of pushback. I'm not sure why, but it feels vaguely similar. And I do think that folks have been, I, I think what, what comes to mind specifically for me is that, you know, Howie has passed and he's been working on this for a long time and just trying to get some tenant provisions in place. And if we can't, you know, I, I don't know what you're going to hear even after the three weeks, like another two weeks, five weeks. I don't know what you're going to hear that's going to be different than the, the city attorney's memo. So I'm not sure what the, the delay will do other than delay it, but.
No, I, I think that personally speaking, I think there's more substance in this than it's been before that I remember. And I, and I, I'd rather delay to where we can bring it back before this body and we continue deliberation and come up with something that works. For me, it's not about TikTok, it's about truly just.
When you say something that works, works.
So, so right now, I think closer than ever, we have a, a city attorney's memo and we have an actual ordinance, I mean, what Councilmember, yeah, an ordinance that Councilmember Cook has brought together. They're not totally aligned just yet, you know, so there's some question around.
So you would be working towards aligning the ordinance and the memo?
I would, I would like to work again with you guys.
And three weeks is not enough time?
I, I don't have time in three weeks. I'm kind of going through some things right now. But I, I would like to formally do that in this body. And I'm just being honest, I don't have the time.
And I just want to be really clear, like there's always a lot of eviction, like concerns rising up over time. And I, and I hear you completely. I rarely have the time, but I do think that this is a much more pressing issue, knowing that prices are going up, like, and knowing that people are facing these evictions. Like it's, it's pressing enough when we talk about housing being a strategic goal.
I got you, I got you, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not just pushing it off to push it off, that's all.
And I don't think that's the case in this. I, I really don't. I'd rather get it right. I don't think that, I mean, yeah, you're right. You're right. Everything you just said is exactly right. I do not think three weeks is, well, if we, if we do this within three weeks versus five weeks, I don't think that's going to be much of a difference. Yeah, I, I don't think that's going to be much of a difference. I, I just want to make sure that I come back after I spend more time reading this and understanding it better, spending time with Councilmember Cook and, and better understanding her. And then looking at what's out there, I do think we can find a way forward. When I say way forward, the options that I talked about, is it an operationalized resource that residents can use that will have the same effect? Pros and cons of that? Is it passing an ordinance? Is it stating, you know, we know it, we know based on preemption or whatever, it may or may not be utilized or it may not be able to hold water or whatever, hold weight, but we're going to put this in place anyway. There are just some, some, some loose ends that I'd like to tie up. To me, it's not about delaying as a tactic. I really want to make this work. Yeah.
I really appreciate this conversation and I want to, I want to thank all of you for asking really good questions. Every single person up here, I think you've asked amazing questions. I've had the, the pleasure of sitting back and, and listening and benefiting from, from your questions and all of the work that the city attorney's office has done. This is an area where we will want to proceed with caution. Caution is important and necessary. We don't want to rush to anything. I appreciate the heartache that I've heard explained by the, the city attorney's office and from fellow colleagues. I'm also familiar with dancing on the line of preemption in the state of North Carolina and writing legislation, writing local ordinances and, and laws that, that, that dance on that, that dance on that line. I think this provides an important tool. That's how I see this, as an important tool for attorneys to be able to, to use to protect tenants. And I also see a potential, it sounds like, for making up ground on additional work that we can enforce, that we can do and, and focus on intentionally and comprehensively to better address the needs of Durham's, Durham's tenants. And so I, I think that we need to, to also do that in addition to adding a tool to the toolbox like this. I understand the slippery slope argument as well. I completely hear that. I also see this as an unusual case, not one that I think that we frequently bring up, a, a case where we'd adopt an ordinance that isn't necessarily, you know, using the police powers that wouldn't necessarily be, that wouldn't necessarily be enforced by, by the city. I, I think that's, that's rare. I don't think that this would be some, become something that would be normal for, for us to do. I've never heard of us doing something like this before. I'm not worried about us seeing this case play out and then continuing to repeat it over and over and kind of erode the value of, of our police powers. And so I, I, I support, I support this. I understand if, if colleagues are hesitant and need, need some extra time. I personally am comfortable with it after hearing all of the conversation, recognizing the, the heartburn and where we are on that. And so I, I hope that we're able to, to proceed with this once, once colleagues are, have been able to answer all of their questions. Thank you.
I think we have an opportunity to be a, a model city in this, and, and not only in the state, but, you know, in Dillon states.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I, it's, at no time, time when this has come up before has anyone, there's not a person on this council who doesn't want to bolster the right of tenants. And no one is obstructing anything or has obstructed anything. It's called due diligence. There was nothing to obstruct because we've never had an ordinance before. It's been a list and menu of ideas that was very abstract. I remember, I was there. There were abstracted conversations. We've never had this much meat on the bone. I'm, it, I'm absolutely committed to, to do, I, to, to doing this. I am also committed to the other things that we're committed to as, as council members, as fiduciaries of the city, as protectors of our brand, as guardians of our, of our imprimatur. If we can help folk, put them in a better position, as I've already stated, put them in a better position than going to court and not cross a threshold of passing laws we know we're not going to enforce and telegraphing that we're passing a law that we're not going to enforce, then fine. If we have to do that, then I'm with it. I'm saying on record, I'm with it. I just would like some more time to explore it and some more time to treat it again with our attorneys, our city attorney's office and, and our colleagues. I'm asking that we take yes for an answer, but let us do the due diligence around it.
I just want to make sure it's clear, we have passed ordinances. We actually did move things forward from that list, that menu. And this council did, well, not this exact council, but the council did approve a number of those items, so.
Okay.
So.
Not this ordinance, but I'm saying, it wasn't, what I'm saying is there wasn't ordinance that came, there were ordinance that came forward.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on the same page. Thank you, guys.
I just want to say that I appreciate that everyone is trying to reach a yes on this and I, I see that that is happening and, and I do appreciate that. I just want to express my frustration that when I ask for additional time on things, what I get told by this board is that the buck stops here and we have to make a decision. So I'm happy to push this off to a more work session, but I just really want people to think about that because like, literally this happened, not the past meeting, but the meeting before, when I asked to send something back to, or we asked to send something back to Planning Commission because we, I was like, we have a different project in front of us and I want to use those tools. And I was told like, the buck stops here, we, we make a decision tonight. I, you know, it is what it is. I just like, I just want to call it out because it is frustrating to sit on this council and like bring something that like, yes, we may have had a long conversation about it today and I know that it's wearisome, but like, these folks from Riverside have been working on this for a really, really long time. Community advocates have been working on this for years. And so I just want to voice that it is frustrating, but I understand and I'm like happy to put it off one more, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to delay it any further.
Totally. And, and every case is treated differently, Councilmember. I wouldn't, I wouldn't oversimplify that. I get your point, but every, every, things are, every case is differently. And I don't want to project to the community that we're being overly subjective about what's serious or what's not, what we're prioritizing or not. You know, it may be another situation tomorrow where, you know, and that's why we're a deliberate body of seven. And you guys may feel differently about a policy that I do and vice versa, you know? So it is, it, if we all voted the same on everything, then we wouldn't need to be here. So, all right. We have a presentation. I quit. All right, I want to use the restroom, I'll be right back. Yeah, let's take a.
We'll take a five-minute hour break. We're back in session at 4:07.
And we won't be mad if you talk fast.
Friends, it's 4:07. If we can come back together. If y'all can hear me in the building, it's 4:07. If colleagues would return. All right, friends, we're back in session. It's 4:08. Item number six, amendment to, amendment number four, the South LRB Wetland and Stream Restoration Design Services Contract. This is a presentation slated to go 10 minutes. Good afternoon, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good afternoon, Mayor Proton Middleton and council members. My name is Sandy Wilber. I'm with the Environmental and Street Services Department. And so today I'm going to do a short presentation on the update for the South LRB Restoration Project. There is an agenda item number six that this is attached to that is amendment four to a professional services contract that provides construction administration outreach and permitting for the project. I wanted to give you just a little bit of a background on the project, the progress we've made and some of the next steps. So this project started off, you know, a few years ago when we bought the, the property. It was a very unique location to the city for a couple of reasons. It's a nine acre site, a very large site for stormwater retrofit. It's located in the low point of the watershed, which is also what is needed to do stormwater treatment. It gets runoff. a local water supply, and will help us with the Falls Lake rules, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later. Looking at this slide, you can see that that is the drainage area for Ellerby Creek. The star in the middle is the location of the project. The two smaller, pink and green areas there are the drainage area that goes into the site. Upper on the right-hand corner, you see Falls Lake, and so that, as I spoke before, is a, is a water supply for the area and has some associated nutrient management rules associated with that. The ruled, the rules that are in place now do require that the city treat developed areas that have not, do not have stormwater quality provided for them right now. That's sort of in contrast with you, if you look at new development, right, they go through the process and they have to build stormwater quality facilities into their plans, but we certainly have older development that were, was not, those facilities were not built on. So this project, you know, was very unique in that we were able to treat quite a bit of area that, you know, was built, you know, decades ago, where, before there was any kind of stormwater rules. So the project goals and benefits, as I talked about before, there's an improvement in the local water quality of Ellerby Creek, making some reductions that are required by the Falls Lake rules, creating a natural area in, you know, right near downtown Durham, and being able to also improve flood control. This project takes out of the floodplain four multifamily structures and 24 single-family structures, as well as reducing the flood elevations to other homeowners downstream of the project. So that's a real improvement for them. We have done, along the way, quite a bit of, a variety of public outreach, including interactive workshops, videos on how the wetland will be treating the stormwater, and working with local schools to provide fence art. So just looking at the project a little bit close up, you can see there's, like, two arrows on the right-hand side. Those are the arrows where the water comes into the project. It will travel through some pre-treatment, and then through the center of the project with meandering streams and wetland areas providing natural filtration to reduce the pollutants. The, the water exits the site on the left-hand side, you can see the, the other arrow where it flows to South Ellerby Creek. Also, on this slide, I've got the half-mile loop trail that's highlighted, that's also going to serve as a maintenance path for the facility itself and some of Duke Energy's facilities. We also have, that loop trail will be connecting to the rail trail, so we've been working closely with them to make sure that, you know, we get all the grades lined up and are able to have some connection to that trail, which I think will help both of our projects. If you look along Trinity Avenue, we are going to have a demonstration rain garden, which I think will help the community get close-up looks to some of the wetland-type plants and seeing how those rain gardens work. And we'll also have, like, a plaza area there, and in that plaza, we have contracted with an artist through General Services to put in a few art installations. One is called the Sound and Sun Basins, which is, they're roughly like a half-sphere with some animals on top in kind of a sun dial orientation. There'll be Creature Comforts, which are some animal sculptures that you could climb coming out of the ground, and some historical and ecological facts that are going to be on the benches. And of course, we'll have other educational and seating areas around the project. We were able to get some grant funding for this project, so through the ARPA-LASSI program, which is Local Assistance for Stormwater Infrastructure Investment Programs. We got $3 million from them. North Carolina Land and Water Fund, we got two different grants from them, a flood reduction grant for $1 million and a restoration grant for $750,000. And also, the City of Raleigh has a program for land within their water supply watershed, and so they gave us a grant for $265,000 also. So that's all in total about $5 million for the project. The overall budget, which comes from the stormwater utility budget, is about $41 million, and that would include the grants. It does not include the art, but it will include the, the grants, and I'll go into a little more detail on the different phases and, and costs. So on this slide, I'm going to show a little bit about the progress and the next steps that we've had on the project. So we started this, as I talked about before, in acquiring the land. We acquired it from Duke University after, you know, extensive outreach with the community to ensure that they were encouraging of the project. After we acquired it, eventually, there were some issues with some vandalism, so we decided to go through with a building demolition project so that, to try to eliminate that. We had a few surprises with that. There was, like, a 10,000-gallon underground storage tank, and certainly, you know, lead and asbestos and all those kind of fun things inside the building since it was from 1950s when it was built. So we were able to remediate those things. Then, when we were moving forward to do Phase Two, which is excavation of soils, we ran into some issues with the state's soil testing requirements. They were kind of in the process of, like, changing how they were going to evaluate soils and where they need to be disposed of. So we ended up doing a, gritting out basically the, the site and taking geotechnical borings to try to comply with those regulations and see where those different grids needed to be disposed of. We also were working with both Water Management and General Services to try to have some beneficial reuse of the soils as they were appropriate. So we were able to use some of that for the old landfill cover and some with the Miss Lake project. Next, we moved on to Phase Three, and so in the process of doing those construction drawings, we were working with Duke Energy, of course. They have a parcel that's just north of the project that has two, two stations up there that are the oldest, well, I guess at least one of them is the oldest one in the city. So they were very interested in the, interested in having access to those substations and also, you know, all the utility lines that were going to those stations. So we worked through some issues with them, and then also in the abandonment of the right-of-way between the two properties so that we could use part of that property for our embankment for our project. So there was an abandonment of, along Dation Avenue for that. Then we did move forward with trying to bid that project as three, just Phase Three, and we got one bid on our first bid, and then the second bid, we, we did get three bids, but it was about twice what we anticipated that it would be. So we went back and talked to the contractors, and we talked to our consultants to try to come up with a new plan to see what, how we could do this moving forward. And so it was decided to split these into Phase 3A and 3B so we could get some more favorable bids, splitting out the utility relocation, then the drainage items, so that, you know, those, those type of contractors could bid for this project. So that kind of brings us up to pretty much today, this week. We did put out the bid for the 3A and got, we did get two bids. So, so that's good. So we're going to rebid it, and then we actually talked to another contractor, and we think that they're going to give us a bid also, so hopefully those will be favorable, so we should know about those very soon on what those costs will be. And then as that project is being, we're anticipating to start that hopefully by the, in the winter, this winter, and then as soon as that project is getting towards the end, we want to go ahead and, like, bid out the 3B so we can start the 3B project right after that. As far as the construction cost of all phases, we're looking at about $32 million for all of those different phases put together. So with that, I will leave you with this, this photo with the fence art for the local schools. This is, we worked with a local artist, Lee Crawford, and the schools were Durham School of the Arts, George Watts, and Central Park School. The project has hit a few bumps, but I'm really grateful for all the support that we've gotten from the community. I still, you know, talk to people really almost on a weekly basis about, about the project and about, you know, what, how they might be able to be interacting with it and where we are on it. And I'm very excited to, you know, get to the end of this project so that people can enjoy all of the amenities and that, you know, Durham can benefit from the environmental cleanup of it. That's all I have.
Thank you so much for a great presentation. Colleagues, Councilmember Riston and Councilmember Cook.
So first of all, I want to thank the city manager for bringing this back to us. This is one of the big public projects we've been talking about that's been, people ask about a lot, so I'm glad to have a conversation here at the work session. So thank you for putting it on the agenda. Ms. Wilber, thanks for the presentation here. At least for me, you don't have to sell me on the benefits of this. This is like hugely important for Durham in terms of open space, in terms of water quality. I mean, as I just said yesterday, for three hours at the UNRBA meeting, talking about Falls Lake rules, anything we can do to reduce nutrients in Falls Lakes. And I know especially, one of our biggest challenges is, like, is stormwater in our, where we have existing developments, one of the biggest problems, to remediate that. So this is a big, huge benefit for water quality, so thanks for all that. My only question is, is about, is about completing this project. So we've, I know the first contract was issued back in 2017, and so you're saying here in the progress that we're going to complete this by 2028, so it's going to take us more than 10 years to complete this. And I know that there, as you described, there's unexpected things always happen, the underground tanks you discovered, or the, the challenges with the, with the third phase sort of getting contractors. So we're like, what I want to ask, and I've asked this for other projects in the past, is like, what, because I know things, there are always delays, but what can we do now to speed this thing up a year? What's possible?
From here forward?
Yeah, to deliver this thing in 2027, so we can tell the residents, like, y'all been asking about this, we know it's been 10 years, we've actually, we've had some delays, but now we're doing some stuff to make, so we can deliver this a little faster, because we've delayed it a bunch of times. Because I'll be honest with you, like, the picture's great there, but it doesn't look like that anymore. It doesn't look like that anymore. It looks dilapidated. So people are asking, what's going on? So can we deliver this a year sooner, and what would it take to get there?
Yeah, so I think at this point, to try to quicken things up, it's really just, you know, getting the contracting through and also, you know, making sure that that second phase follows along on that first phase. So, you know, kind of squeezing those two phases in as close as possible and being able to have them start, you know, as early as possible after the first phase gets finished.
Well, so for example, it says that, that, and that's just so we're clear, so you mentioned RFP, but we, what we're approving today is a contract with, a contract to do Phase 3A, right? We're not going.
To do the construction administration, it's professional services.
Oh, not the, so you still have to do the, so we're doing bids.
Right, yeah, we, we decided to go ahead and, you know, do this, but we, you will be getting the, you know, once we get bids open in and, and that sort of thing, you'll be getting the contract for the construction, but we have not issued that yet.
Can we even start the, like, I know we're going to, like, can we start the RFP for Phase 3B while we're doing 3As? We can kind of.
Yes, yes, that's, that's exactly what we anticipate doing, is like, as soon as we are, you know, out the appropriate, you know, month or two, two, couple of months, we will go ahead and get that phase started so that they can start immediately.
For, once 3A ends?
Correct.
Yeah. Could they do, like, start, start 3B while 3A is still completing?
I don't think so, just the nature of the work of, of how the, how it's lined up, I'm not, I'm not sure. I could look at it, I could look at it, but I think they would have to be pretty finished, right?
But you're saying, do you think there's a chance we can do this a little faster, maybe complete it by '27? Do I hear you saying that?
I don't know if I could promise that, I will say. I mean, I will do it, we'll be doing it as fast as we can, but there's a certain amount of construction time that it will take, so.
Because also, you know, when, when projects go on longer, then it's also, like, opportunity cost for staff. I'd rather have, I'd love to finish this up and have staff get on to other stuff too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're at the point where it takes a certain amount of time to construct it, so I don't know how much faster we can do on the construction part of it, like, once we're at the construction phase.
Just, yeah, whatever you can do to, like, move this thing faster. People will be happy, we can, because we pushed the timeline back multiple.
And certainly, thematically, consistent comments with the last work session. You know, I think, and we, we had conversations after that, that work session. I think, you know, we understand, we're hearing a strong sense of urgency from council. You know, I just want to affirm and support staff that, you know, if we had simple, simple switches, we'd flip them, and if we thought that there were, you know, really high-return investments we could make, we would make them. So I don't think, I don't want to set expectations high. I think this is more of a looking for the small efficiencies in the couch cushions kind of exercise, which we are very intent on doing. So I think, I think council message received clearly, you want to see these moving as quickly as possible. I think one of the things that we communicated just as, as quickly as last work session is down to all of our project managers that if there are any delays, that they believe that either manager's office assistance or council assistance could be at play, please let us know. So we are doing the things I think you want us to do, but I also want to support that, I don't want to set expectations high or say yes, because we want to say yes. I think we need to give you realistic expectations. So we're going to keep doing both things, doing everything we can to accelerate, but also giving you as, as realistic expectations as possible.
Thanks.
Want to copy here? Oh, it's the Cook. Okay, sure, forgive me. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. This might not be a specific question for you, but maybe for the manager. This is, this is the second time that we've heard about bids coming back being extraordinarily high and the result being then to bifurcate out parts of the bid. Is this not something that we're, now that we're seeing it, that we're able to, to, like, more readily predict so that we don't have to waste the time of, like, getting back those high bids and then rebidding out after separating some of that stuff?
I don't want to put DCN Probst on the spot, but I think, given her exposure to the market and, you know, a lot of these different scenarios, I think she's probably better suited to answer that than me.
Thank you, Gina Probst, Deputy City Manager. I would say we're experiencing very similarly what you've seen happen in Raleigh with BRT and along with budgeting. And some of these budgeted, budgets were produced many years ago, and along that time, you know,
that they believe that either manager's office assistance or council assistance could be at play, please let us know. So we are doing the things I think you want us to do, but I also want to support that, I don't want to set expectations high or say yes, because we want to say yes. I think we need to give you realistic expectations. So we're going to keep doing both things, doing everything we can to accelerate, but also giving you as realistic expectations as possible.
Thanks.
Want to copy here? Oh, it's the Cook. Okay, sure, forgive me. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. This might not be a specific question for you, but maybe for the manager. This is, this is the second time that we've heard about bids coming back being extraordinarily high and the result being then to bifurcate out parts of the bid. Is this not something that we're, now that we're seeing it, that we're able to like more readily predict so that we don't have to waste the time of like getting back those high bids and then rebidding out after separating some of that stuff?
I don't want to put DCN Probst on the spot, but I think given her exposure to the market and, you know, a lot of these different scenarios, I think she's probably better suited to answer that than me.
Thank you, Gina Probst, Deputy City Manager. I would say we're experiencing very similarly what you've seen happen in Raleigh with BRT and along with budgeting. And some of these budgets were produced many years ago. And along that time, you know, we were able to advance things, we're able to bid them. You have, we have cost estimates from engineers at the time that we go to bid, but the market does what the market does. And sometimes there are surprises on bid day. You definitely don't want it to be two times the amount. Then you have to re-strategize. Where is the labor force? If this is too big or not the right size for a large general contractor, do we break it out into segments for direct utility contractors and then for the wetland stream contractor? Because we have a very tight construction market when it comes to availability of contractors to do our work, and we're competing with others. So I think that we have learned a lot and we see what's happening in our other communities with rebids. And even this one, you know, as Sandy just explained, they opened bids on Monday and only got two bids. You can't award with two bids, they have to rebid it. And they're, I'm hoping to have another bid to make sure we have, you know, the ability to move this project forward. But we can use all of that to be very surgical in the future.
And I think just to the spirit of the question, I think, you know, really the heart of your question is, are we paying attention when these things happen and do we pivot when we need to? And I feel pretty comfortable the answer is yes. In the 12 years I've been with the city, I think I've seen our contracting and bidding procedures morph with the market. And when the market is changing, we try and adopt, adapt our procedures. And I agree, we are seeing that more now. And as DCN Probst indicated, I think we're, we will continue to try and find the best strategy to move projects as quickly and efficiently in that environment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just hearing you say that there's cost predictions, but we know the timeframe of this project, right? And so, I mean, I do feel like it's at least like, it's at least predictable that those cost predictions are not going to be accurate that we had made originally. And so I'm just like wondering, I mean, bifurcation, of course, is a tool. But I'm just wondering if there's like other things that we can think, this is not, this is just like a broad question, not to be answered like right now, but I'm just, it's just something that I'm thinking about as we hear it happening frequently, so.
Thank you, I appreciate the presentation and conversation, and I'm glad we are moving forward. I mean, it looks, I mean, it's almost double what we thought it was going to be, which is a lot of money. I think my question is more around like the CIP. I feel, I feel like we're getting better on the idea, like we pack too many things in there. And so I think that, for me, if it's clear that things are moving, I would rather take things off the list. Like every year, you know, it's a five-year thing, construction costs, whatever. I think there needs to be a strategy around, we already are moving forward at this thing. That, that's where we got, throw the money at it to get it done. And if that means that there's things that don't get put in the CIP, because we've already, we've already put our eggs in a certain basket, I would rather do that than, and deliver the project in a timely way or quicker. Yeah, we couldn't, you know, the state's process around asbestos and lead is what it is, right? But I think that, and that's not necessarily, that's not just this project, that's just a general approach. And I just want to be able to have that conversation when we talk about the budget this coming year. I think that residents will feel better having a, like a thing that's delivered and seeing it versus, oh, a big old list that, you know, this thing, great, that's a, that's a thing that's never going to happen because this thing that's been here in front of me for 10 years and I live around the corner, I've looked at this thing for a long time. So that's just where I'm at. And I, we all know what happened and it's still weird. It has, you know, construction has never been the same since COVID. Like, we all thought, oh, it's the lumber, oh, it's this. It has not been the same since COVID. So we're five years in of that wonkiness. And I think that the market's even wonkier today. So that's all.
So, question, I, and this is just out of curiosity. Are we, and not this project specifically, but could be, I guess. We have some pretty top-tier universities in the area. And no, they don't have the heavy equipment, but they do have the, a lot of intellectual capacity. How realistic is it to partner with our local universities in some of these major projects in whatever capacity that would be deemed appropriate? And I only ask, my son goes to Duke, you know, he's a sophomore, but he went halfway around the world to Swaziland, Eswatini, to build bridges because they didn't have the infrastructure. And they partnered with a nonprofit that built bridges. And he said, Dad, if I can go halfway around the world to do mission trips, why can't we do it right here in Durham? I never thought about, I mean, I've thought about it before, but I never really acted on it. And I'm looking at these major projects and I'm thinking about having world-class institutions in our backyard, like right in here, right in the city. Have we ever entertained that?
I can answer a little bit. I mean, just in my group, of course, we do stormwater retrofit, so we have, we do partner a lot in like grant projects with like NC State. And we also have done some stuff with Duke. They provided us some information on this project. They did a study, one of the classes did a study about equity and how it could be used in this project. And so we, like all of, a lot of different projects, we go to the university. We have had, there was a project where we were doing residential rain gardens and we got, the university was a part of one of the teams. Of course, you know, as far as construction, you know, we have to go through, you know, a formal bid process. So if they were partners, it's more, I see it more on the professional services side. A lot of times there's some university involvement. I don't see it as much on the construction side because, as you said, they don't have the big equipment and things. But certainly I have seen them be on teams.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also ask, because I think about the homes that were built between NCCU and Hillside, they were built by high school students of Hillside High School. And those are actually homes that people still live in today. I think about Wake Tech, who has a heavy machinery course. And they are starting to do some, you know, not, I mean, it's like practicums. They're doing some of that work. So it's good to hear that we are engaging them, and I hope that we can do that more. There is value to that hands-on experience. And it's mutually beneficial if we could, you know, not necessarily pay millions to a contractor, but also could give some real hands-on learning experiences to young people that are learning here in the city. I had another question, but I'll pass, and if it comes back, I'll ask.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, and the benefit of following a strategic plan with presentations like this. You're thinking about it in that big picture. But I just wanted to ask, knowing that we now have a vision in zero coordinator, is there any conversations between transportation on this project? I will say that I was the president of INC when Duke died, well, no, I think it was a, yeah. When Duke Diet and Fitness first came up and we were having these conversations about transport, or at least what the corridors could look like in connection. And so I don't know if that conversation has continued or, but I didn't see anything in the report, so I'm a little-
Yeah, we are definitely, we're adjacent to the rail trail, so most of that conversation goes with the rail trail and the connections to our project, right? Through that plan.
I would just ask if we could just make sure to keep that included-
Definitely.
-in these presentations so that, you know, future councils, however long, if it's 28 or 32, whenever it happens, that they understand that there's been a lot of forethought put into this project.
Will do.
And then also, I think, yeah, no, I think I'm good.
The, one other thing I have was, how, one of the biggest issues we deal with in contracting and bidding out is we have a lot of contractors, but we don't have a lot that can take on a big chunk of the project. How, how many pieces can we break these, can we break this down into?
I mean, I think at this point, we are in sort of the logical breakdown because it's more of the structural and stormwater facilities for the first phase and more of the people who do stream restorations and things like that in the second phase. So to me, that, in this particular case, I think those are the logical. I mean, I think once you start breaking it down too many, then you got, you run into the like, trying to line it up to make sure they move across. So I think at this point, I feel comfortable with the two, breaking it down into two. And it does look like, you know, we at least got the two bids on this, so. And potentially talk to a contractor to see if they would bid as a third bidder too, so.
Cool, well, I know some goats that can do some clear cutting, you know.
Sounds good.
Did it for Paper Streets. But lastly, I'd say, one of the comments I put on the strategic plan, sticky note earlier this morning, was diversify our land use and purpose. I love seeing that we can have a park that is multi-use, that's an active space. Yeah, I mean, it's a beautiful park that does a real, you know, a stormwater facility, but it's a park. And I just love being able to see that, that multi-use, so, thank you.
Thanks.
I would just like to ask, in addition to the stormwater restoration, I'm sure there's conversation, and I'm sure it's just not in the presentation, but around how you'll be using solar-powered, what have you, on-site? I think those are, those are pieces that could build into our, oh my gosh, it just went right out of my head, it's been too long. But our carbon footprint reduction conversation, and I know, and I'm looking at Stacy back there. And I know that this, this is part of the conversation, but I think making sure that those things are in the update presentations are helpful to make sure we see the, see across the board how things are moving.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rick, were you, did you?
I think most of what everybody else has said is in line with what I want to say. Just, it's a mammoth project, it's expensive, the costs have gone up. It's been around for a really long time, over a decade now. And appreciate your work on this, highly anticipated project. People talk about this one all the time, partially because people have been fed a beautiful rendering. And this reminds me a lot of the, I forgot the name of the park in Atlanta, that is the Park Pond. Yeah, yeah, right, Fourth Ward. It's a beautiful park and super accessible and just has completely revitalized the area. So, yeah, thank you so much for the work you're doing.
All right, thank you so much. Wonderful presentation, much anticipated project. Mr. Manager, I think you had a matter that you wanted to bring up under other matters?
So I had three quick updates. The first is that I wanted to revisit the discussion on the housing ordinance. Attorney Rayberg and I had a sidebar just to confer. And we want to make sure we have clear direction from council on what level, if any, of staff support or attorney's office support is expected and what the nature of the work would be between where the item sits now, as Councilmember Cook has submitted it on the agenda today, and how it would come back. So we just want to make sure if there are expectations of staff or the attorney's office, that we get those clearly. So we wanted to put that on the table, and then I have two items after that.
Yeah, I, since I, my specific question was, is there some way we can empower tenants to exploit the voice of the city certifying that list that makes a residence uninhabitable, either through ordinance or through some other instrument that does not cross the threshold of saying you don't have to pay your rent, which we cannot enforce by, per our council's reading? But is there anything short of that where we can still achieve the end of, is there language we can craft that doesn't cross the threshold of rent prohibition, but gives, still has the same impact and effect of tenants being able to say, there's an ordinance by the city that says this place is uninhabitable? And that's, that's what we're standing on here in the court. That's-
So it sounds, so Sophia had in the memo made two potential alternatives. It sounds like you want us to expand on the first one.
Yeah, that would be helpful to me.
Okay.
And to then to explore with my colleagues, the viability of, the palatability of it, does it still meet our end of wanting to empower tenants without putting us in a position of passing a law that we know we're going in knowing it's unenforceable? That's my ask.
And is it acceptable to the council if that comes in the form of a memo or in draft ordinance provisions? Is that what you're asking for in the interim?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, he just articulated what I was going to request.
Okay.
I just want to be able to lay all the options out based on what was presented and what our options are, where we can most empower our tenants without, you know, crossing over into that line of unenforceable laws.
Okay, we'll do what we can.
And I want to be clear that the ordinance as written is still going to be on the agenda when we come back for the work session.
No, absolutely, no. And my expectation is that, that we would juxtapose that with the, with the ordinance, right? And may I just say, it's Councilmember Cook's leadership and passion that have brought me to this point. And I just want to, you know, I want to make a distinction between sending something back to an advisory body and keeping it before us. So I don't want you to feel in any way that, you know, that we're not honoring your request. I just see a substantive difference between, this is us doing our due diligence as the last final arbiter, as opposed to shopping it out to someone else. So I just wanted to be very clear, but it's your passion and leadership that I think that has caused this and brought this. And I hope you'll see this as honoring it. Thank you.
And do you envision that being on the next work session? Or do you have a request that council give you more time?
I mean, I think we can, it's not that heavy a lift just to expand on that. I think my question is, do you want that as just a standalone that I send to the council? Or do you want to incorporate it with Councilmember Cook's materials for consideration?
Could we have both?
Sure, yes, yes, and?
Let's have a standalone, because I'm going to leave mine as I wrote it.
Okay.
So is that, what date is that?
The next-
Okay, yeah, so we would have basically an additional attachment to what's already on our-
What I just heard Councilmember say, Councilmember Cook say is that she doesn't want us to incorporate it as an attachment? You want it as a separate informational item, correct? Like, not attached to your item?
I don't want it meshed with my-
Correct.
-work, but as an attachment is fine.
Okay, yeah, 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 no, I wasn't talking about incorporating it in it.
Okay, yes, an attachment is fine, like with the same agenda item, that we just have those, all the information in front of us.
I didn't clearly understand that to be what you said, but thank you.
So there will be language that, we got, okay, yeah, we got it.
Great, thank you for that clarification. And that serves as a good example for the next, just brief update I wanted to do. I wanted to admit that I don't think the staff has been following a perfectly consistent process in handling requests that come up at council meetings for agenda items. And as I was discussing this with the council member yesterday and some different expectations, I mentioned it to the city attorney, who thankfully reminded me that council's recent rules of procedure very specifically describe what's going to happen. So I just wanted to tell the council that going forward, it is my intention to default to your rules of procedure, which specifically lay out how council members add items to the agenda. It is, begins at number four on page seven. That will be my default. It is obviously the council's rules of procedure, so you can direct us to do it differently at the time, but short of that, that'll be my expectation. My apologies to any council members who have not felt well-served by the process that we've followed. I think this direction makes it very clear to me. So if anyone has any questions about that, we'll follow that process going forward.
Can you state what that is?
Yes, so the process in short is that the council member who intends to request an item be added, first consult with the mayor prior to a work session, with the mayor's consultation is what it says. Then the requesting council member will bring it up at a work session for placement at a future work session. If any council member objects, it has to be voted on and a majority of the council place it on the agenda. If a council member does not object, then it is automatically placed on the agenda. The item then goes to the city manager for scheduling only, and the rules say that the city manager has the discretion to determine the appropriate meeting agenda to include the item. It then calls on the council member and the council member only to prepare the materials for that first discussion. So it says, it is the requesting council member's responsibility to prepare a concise report and provide this report along with any relevant attachments for inclusion in the agenda packet. So then that, that discussion after it is scheduled takes place and presumably is led by that council member. When that is complete, the council, the rules of procedure say that the council may choose to do one of three things. It can discuss the issue and take action at the meeting if no information is required from staff and if council does not seek public input. Or it can refer the request to a future council- Or it can refer the request to a future council meeting at which time a staff report with staff recommendation will be prepared or decide not to pursue the council-initiated request. So at minimum, it sounds like a two-meeting process. One to request and then the next meeting is where the item would be heard. And then if there's a desire for staff work to be followed on, it would be a third meeting at which time staff work would be added to that. So I wanted to clarify that. I appreciate the council's thoughtfulness in preparing those guidelines and regret if staff hasn't been following those to the letter. We will going forward. Any questions on that?
Yeah, just real quick. Councilmember Cook, I'm going to use you as an example. Councilmember Cook reached out. She said, hey, I have two things to talk to you about. And I said, hey, I'm going to call you right back. I'm about to go onstage and speak. That was yesterday in a different time zone. I've yet to speak with her. And so I would request that if there is an item, just make sure you email me so Cam can facilitate the process without me having actually, like, basically she's going to make sure it's in front of my face and it's also going to be on the mayor, mayor manager meeting agenda as well. And we'll just move that along. Just, you know, and also just let me know as well. But I, I just want to make sure we don't, I don't drop the ball so we can follow that process.
And how often is the mayor manager meeting?
Every Monday. So we have a standing meeting and we kind of talk just about every day also.
So with that guidance, just for reference, with Councilmember Rist's suggestion of the biophilic cities, my presumption would mean then that assuming council has not objected, that means it will go to me to schedule. I have gotten guidance from you all about when you would like that. And so then you will prepare that item. We will make sure that item gets submitted. Our staff will, will handle the submitting of the item. It will be Councilmember Rist's obligation to present that item at council. And then should council want further work from staff, it would come at an end of the discussion there or they may move forward at their desire. So as long as we all are clear on that, that is what we will follow. And if you want to modify that at any time, please just let us know. The last update I wanted to provide is that we were not successful in our attempt to find an alternate arrangement for your organizational meeting. And so this would revert back to our normal calendar, which would be the organizational meeting would take place on the first meeting in December. And that, under normal procedures, would still be a business meeting. I think the one option that's been discussed that I don't recommend, but I will implement at council's direction is to eliminate a business cycle whereby there would not be business items the evening of, of the organizational meeting. We would therefore, the meetings before and after that would, would probably have a pretty significant business load. I wanted to provide you that update. And we're welcome to entertain other ideas. We've, we've put a lot out there and just you have very complicated calendars, as you know.
Well, thank you so much.
I'll yield to you to settle, Mr. Mayor.
All right, just, do you want to go ahead and settle up? All right, bye. I have a little brief announcement after you do that.
To settle the agenda, I have on consent, items one through eight, items 10 through 12, items 14 through 16, item 19 and item 21. On general business agenda, we have item nine. And on general business agenda, public hearings, items 17 and 18.
All right. Thanks for settling in the agenda. I will entertain a motion to--
Move to settle?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you guys for a very rich meeting today. I'll be hosting a reception at the Durham Hotel. You're all invited. It starts at, in six minutes. It'll go to 7:30 and I'll be hosting another reception tomorrow evening at the same time at, at my restaurant. You're all welcome to please come. And special guest tomorrow is the DNC chair. So I'll be at the convention center. All right, thank you all. Meeting adjourned at 4:54.